All right, everyone. Good evening. Happy Earth Day. Thank you for joining us for our study session. We'll begin with roll call. The Assistant City Clerk will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Hicks?
Here.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Showalter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Here.
Mayor Kame? Here. Thank you. We have a quorum with all members present.
Great, thank you. So we begin tonight with a study session. Item 3.1 is our Moffett Boulevard Precise Plan Land Use Alternatives and Streetscape Priorities. Mandarin and Spanish translation services are available for this item. We'll now hear from our Mandarin interpreter. I think we're just working out some technical difficulties to be able to hear from our interpreters. Can we hear from our Chinese Mandarin interpreter first, please?
Yes, yes, okay.
Great, thank you. We'll now hear from our Spanish interpreter. Great, thank you. So the purpose of this study session is to review the Moffett Boulevard Precise Plan Land Use Alternatives and provide direction on a preferred land use alternative as well as streetscape priorities. Assistant Community Development Director Amber Blazinski and Community Development Director Christian Murdock will present the item. If you'd like to speak on this item in person, now is the time to submit your blue speaker card to the Assistant City Clerk now. And we'll begin with a staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Kame, members of the city council. My name is Amber Blazinski, Assistant Community Development Director. And with me on the dais is Aki Snelling, who's the project planner for the Moffett Boulevard Precise Plan. The Moffett Boulevard Precise Plan will be a new precise plan that will serve as the zoning regulations for the area shown in blue. Similar to other precise plans in the city, it will include development and streetscape standards for the area and implement guidance from the general plan, housing element, and latest council work plan. The most recent council hearing on the project was November 19th, 2024, when the council provided direction on the visioning framework and potential strategies for the Moffett area and designated four adjacent areas as future study areas shown in tan. For these future study areas, new development standards would be limited and no change in allowed land use or densities would occur at this time. The city, in conjunction with our consultants, have conducted extensive community outreach since last year's EPC and city council study sessions and previous outreach efforts, which included an event table at the February 23rd, 2025 Mountain View Farmers Market, visits to businesses along Moffett to announce the March 3 community workshop. A community workshop on land use alternatives and streetscape improvement concepts was held on March 3, where 85 attendees participated in group discussions on the land use alternatives and provided input in a live survey to rank streetscape improvement concepts. Additionally, the city conducted an online survey that ran between March 7 and April 6, where 144 responses were received regarding the land use alternatives and streetscape improvement concepts. At the previous study session, five vision themes and potential strategies were presented. City council provided direction to update the themes and strategies as shown on these slides. Vision theme one is a unique identity and community for residents, businesses, workers, and visitors. Vision theme two is a thriving hub of economic activity and uses for the neighborhood and surrounding areas. Vision theme three is a revitalized neighborhood that embraces a range of housing, business, and community amenities and uses for the neighborhood and surrounding areas. The language underlined in yellow was modified from its original form based on EPC and council input. Vision theme four is an accessible pedestrian and bicycle-friendly multimodal corridor. And vision theme five is a unique place with engaging and unique activities, events, and opportunities. And as mentioned in the previous slide, the language underlined in yellow was modified based on EPC and council input. There are two main questions for the city council to provide direction on tonight. The first question for city council consideration is in regard to the land use alternatives for the precise plan. As a result of previous EPC, council, and community input, three land use alternatives are proposed. One is a medium-intensity mixed-use plan. Two is a higher-intensity mixed-use plan. And three is a focus-mixed-use plan. These alternatives are not meant to represent the only possible approaches for land uses, character, heights, and densities. They are intended to offer various ways of looking at the corridor that can be mixed and matched to create the preferred alternative. Alternative A is a medium-intensity mixed-use proposal applying housing density per the city's adopted housing element and encouraging but not requiring ground-floor non-residential uses. This alternative allows a base housing density of up to approximately 75 dwelling units an acre and maximum building heights of around four to five stories. Alternative B is a higher-intensity mixed-use plan, but would require a ground-floor non-residential component on Moffett Boulevard. This alternative allows a base housing density of up to approximately 100 dwelling units an acre and maximum building heights of five to seven stories. Alternative C is a focus-mixed-use alternative that includes two nodes for commercial activity along Moffett Boulevard at Central Expressway near the Transit Center and between Central Avenue and Cypress Point Drive, where walkable commercial activity is likely. This alternative allows a base housing density up to 100 units per acre in specific commercial nodes and a housing density of up to 75 units per acre outside of these node areas. This would correspond to maximum building heights of four to seven stories, with the taller buildings focused in the nodes where the base density would be higher. The EPC did not have a clear majority on land use alternatives. Three of the six commissioners recommended alternative C, which is the focus-mixed-use. A majority of commissioners expressed support for a focused approach in general, but there was disagreement about the details and specific boundaries of the nodes. Key issues that were discussed included the ability to require ground-floor non-residential uses, given state density bonus law, higher density at 100 Moffett, given that it's newer and not likely to change in the near future, alternative B densities and commercial requirements, whether higher densities are appropriate on the west side of Moffett between Central and the Mobile Home Park, and recognition that alternative B is the best for housing production. Community input included a wide variety of responses, particularly regarding density and maximum building heights. Opinions varied and spanned the range of densities proposed in these alternatives. For non-residential uses, some said not enough commercial was being proposed and commercial should be required. Participants also asked for more opportunities for walkability and bikeability and highlighted parking as an issue, though state law limits our ability to require onsite parking. The first question for the council is, does council prefer land use alternative A, medium-intensity mixed-use, B, higher-intensity mixed-use, or C, focus-mixed-use as the preferred land use alternative? Now we'll move on to the second part of our focus for tonight, where I want to say that it will be important to note that the process to determine final streetscape design will require further study to consider items such as right-of-way street width, ability to accommodate improvements near utilities, existing capital projects, a flexible approach to vary along the corridor, traffic modeling and vehicle trips, ability for pedestrian and bicycle continuity, the Transit Center master plan, and cost and funding for improvements. That being said, there are six options on the next slides detailing the potential use of the limited space in the right-of-way. We are seeking council input on the priorities among these six options because they cannot all be accommodated in the limited right-of-way. The options include wider sidewalks with trees and pedestrian amenities, buffered or protected bike lanes. Buffered bike lanes are separated from the vehicle lane with markings, while protected bike lanes are separated from the vehicle lane with improvements such as curbs or landscaping. Other options include a landscape boulevard with medians, maintaining the current vehicle roadway capacity with four vehicle lanes, and on-street parking. A key aspect of council's consideration of streetscape improvements is the likely need for trade-offs due to that limited space within the right-of-way. Therefore, understanding the priorities within the limited right-of-way is important at this stage of the planning process. There are three streetscape improvement priority rankings from the EPC study session, the March 3 community workshop attendees and respondents from the online survey. EPC recommendations include the following priorities. All six commissioners present prioritized wider sidewalks with trees and pedestrian amenities. Five commissioners prioritized protected bike lanes. Three commissioners prioritized on-street parking, but two of those were more concerned about addressing loading needs such as deliveries than residential or commercial parking needs. Workshop participants ranked priorities as follows, from first to last. Wider sidewalks with trees and pedestrian amenities, protected bike lanes, buffered bike lanes, landscape boulevard with medians, on-street parking, and four-vehicle travel lanes. In the survey, the priorities ranked as followed. Wider sidewalks with trees and pedestrian amenities, protected bike lanes, landscape boulevard with medians, buffered bike lanes, on-street parking, and four-vehicle travel lanes. Other comments from the workshop and survey expressed the need for improved traffic calming measures, better landscaping and more lighting, improved bicycle facilities and green spaces. All three groups ranked wider sidewalks with trees and pedestrian amenities as a first priority and protected bike lanes as a second priority. The second question for tonight is, does council agree that the priorities for streetscape improvements to be studied on Moffett Boulevard include wider sidewalks with trees and pedestrian amenities, protected bike lanes instead of buffered bike lanes, a landscape boulevard with medians, and studying the feasibility of preserving on-street parking with a road diet to less than four travel lanes, which is likely necessary to accommodate active transportation improvements? In terms of next steps, based upon council's preferred alternative, the project team will begin the environmental review process and begin drafting the precise plan. Staff will also conduct additional focused outreach and hold additional EPC and council discussions. This slide shows both questions that staff would like the council to provide response to and concludes our presentation. Also in attendance are the following city staff. Advanced Planning Manager Eric Anderson, who is joining us virtually due to jury duty. Community Development Director Christian Murdock. Public Works Director Jennifer Ang. Assistant Public Works Director Ed Orango. And Senior Civil Engineer Chong Hong. Additionally, we have Dan Amstyn from our consultant team, MIG. That concludes my presentation. We're happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you so much. Since this is a study session, we'll begin with public comment. So would any member of the public joining us virtually in person like to provide comment on this item? Hopefully, everyone has submitted their blue speaker card. And let's see how many are in the queue. Okay. So... Why don't we do... Two and a half minutes? And then I see it says April Webster on behalf of group, 10 minutes. So you'll be able to identify everyone. Great, thank you. April, are you here? So April will begin, and when her time is up, then we have Sergio Baragas, Mark Christensen, Alex Brown, and then we'll move on to virtual. So if anyone else in chambers is looking to speak, please submit your blue speaker card. All right, we'll just wait till the timer comes up, April. I should be right here.
Of course. Yeah. Great, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight to share a vision for Moffett Boulevard. A vision shaped by community input. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, you can stand on the first slide. Community input through two rounds of public outreach. What emerged was clear. Residents don't want another pass-through corridor. They want a people-first neighborhood, safe, walkable, vibrant, and green. This is about aligning the plan with the values we already committed to as a city. Next slide, please. This is what Moffett looks like today, actually, this afternoon. Right now, Moffett isn't designed for the future we say we want. It's built for cars, not for people. Four lanes, fast-moving traffic, 40 miles per hour, faster than ECR, narrow sidewalks, and a few trees make the area feel basically dangerous, hostile, and hot. Not a lot of people walk along here. They walk along the neighborhood streets instead. It's also one of the city's main truck routes, and this is not compatible with creating a vibrant neighborhood. The good news is, we know how to do better. We've done it before on Castro. We're doing it on California. Next slide, please. What we heard from community. Through two rounds of outreach, we heard from people who live here, work here, and visit often. Over and over again, we heard the same hopes: wider sidewalks, separated bike lanes, shade trees, plazas, linear parks, pocket parks, biseos, gathering spaces, and mixed-use development. People want a neighborhood, not a street. One resident put it perfectly. They want to have a hard time choosing what to do, not a hard time finding anything to do. Next slide. These are just some of the examples of the quotes I pulled. I took photos during both of the outreach meetings and also recorded what people had to say. So it just gives you a sense. You know, there's a lot of people asking for local businesses. They wanted somewhere to gather, to meet their friends, to sit down. A lot of talk about coffee. You heard green over and over again. People want a hard time picking something to do, not a hard time finding something to do. And someone even shouted out, "Close it down like Castro." And I just want to point out that Castro used to be a four-lane road as well. Next slide, please. From the second outreach meeting, there was live polling done, and there were approximately 61 to 71 participants who responded to each poll question. I took photos of the last state of each of these questions. There are two colors on this chart. The dark green are people who really liked the concept. The light green said it was worth considering. The other two categories were don't like and not sure, but you can see from the results, very few people weren't interested in any of these five amenities. And you're voting on some of these today. Wider sidewalks with trees and pedestrian amenities were overwhelmingly popular with everyone across all the groups in both meetings. Protected bike lanes were much more popular than the buffered bike lanes. Everyone wants parks, again, and biseos. People want a really livable neighborhood. Next slide, please. And you saw this in one of the presentations from staff where the public stood on keeping the four travel lanes. The red is to indicate that people really didn't like it. 70% of people of that 61 to 71 participants who were there live, they didn't want the four lanes on Moffett kept. Basically, they're rejecting a car-centric approach. This is really, when you think about it, there's only so much space in the streetscape. They want all of those amenities, and they don't want those lanes of traffic. They want that shut down for a road diet. There's really strong support for repurposing excess asphalt into space for people. And we hear this over and over again through various meetings, BPACs, EPC, precise plans. This is what people want. Next slide, please. In terms of our shared priorities, I fed this through ChatGPT, all the comments and the images and the video. These are basically the priorities that people want. And basically, the image again and again is clear and is unified. Prioritize people over cars. We want people first, human-scale design, green corridors. We want safety in the streets. Create welcoming spaces that foster community life. Next slide, please. And this is really about honoring the vestment we've already made in the area. Transit, active transportation, downtown vibrancy, and extending those benefits to this neighborhood. Let's not miss the chance to build the future our community is asking for. Thank you so much. I see the rest of my time.
Great, thank you. Assistant City Clerk, do you mind reading all of the people that are represented in that?
April spoke on behalf of Bruce England, Cliff Chambers, Celia Pamer. Forgive me for my pronunciation. Sergey Dorikart, Keon Chan, Deb Hennington. And that was it.
Great, thank you. All right, next in the queue is Sergio, then Mark, then Alex. If you don't mind queuing up and coming to the podium, that'd be great. You.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and community members. My name is Setheel Baragas, and I'm a representative at the NorCal Carpenters Union Local 405, which covers Santa Clara County. As you consider the next steps in the Moffett Boulevard Precise Plan, I want to express our support for a vision that doesn't just shape the future of this corridor, but also strengthens the community that builds it literally. Mountain View has a unique opportunity to lead by example. By including strong labor standards in the implementation of this plan, you ensure that local construction workers, who are vital to making the vision a reality, are treated with dignity, paid fair wages, and given access to health care and career pathways. We're not just talking about buildings. We're talking about community investment. Labor standards means stable, middle-class jobs for residents who will live, work, and raise families here. It's how we make sure that the growth we're planning isn't just for some, but for all. We urge you to move forward with this study session by signaling your commitment to responsible development, development that reflects Mountain View's values, equity, inclusion, and sustainability. That begins with protecting the workforce that's bringing this plan to life. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Next is Mark Christensen.
Good evening. I wanted to express my concerns about the planned development for 400 Moffett Boulevard. I have been living...
Do you mind pulling the mic down?
I'm sorry. And I'm sorry I have to read, but...
It's for the people watching, so they can hear you when you speak directly.
Time's limited, yes. Yes, I'm sorry. I've been living at 440 Moffett since 1988. While I do not expect things to remain as they are, I do expect consideration of the impacts of new development on surrounding neighbors. New development should not exceed the current maximum height of the local area. The 400 Moffett proposal includes a six-story height for the entire footprint with a relatively short setback from Moffett Mobile Home Park property. This exceeds the current maximum height of four stories for the block bounded by Moffett Boulevard, Central Avenue, Sterling Shoreline, and Middlefield Road by two stories and is three stories higher than the Hampton Inn next door, 390 Moffett. The proposed development would cast a very long shadow over the Mobile Home Park. There are 143 units, and while I do not have population figures, assuming an average of occupancy of four persons per unit, approximately 600 people would be affected. I should note that the shadow plots and the developers' proposal during summer are misleading. The sun does not hover around Zenith all day, even during summer. I request serious consideration of either a high cap of four stories or a step-back design with four stories nearest the property line with the Mobile Home Park, increase to five or six stories on the Moffett side to alleviate the shadow issue. And regarding the treatment of Moffett Boulevard, I am in general opposed to road diets. We already have congestion in this area, and it's going to increase when you put hundreds of more units along that corridor. And I'm already dealing with congestion at some times, so I'd just rather keep access to Central Expressway and to Middlefield and the freeways not restricted more than it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Brown, and then Mario Martin.
Hi, friends. I feel an extreme sense of deja vu. How many times has this come up? Anyway, Moffett is a good opportunity. I think that we have a lot, a chance right now to set a standard for the extension of downtown in a way that it grows to support Mountain View, to support the residents, not just who are here now, but in the future. And I don't think that we should be compromising on that. I don't think we should compromise on the future of the area. I'd be, I've been to a lot of the sessions. Most of the tables I've been at have supported more housing because we recognize there's a need for it. I do think that I would oppose unnecessary setbacks or setbacks, but I do want wide sidewalks or arcades, things that are human-focused. And I think that if we can do that, you saw the GMB letter, I think James had a lot of good examples. I think that we could set up that area for future development that is supportive of all the people, and I think that'd be great. Should've gone with 90 seconds. I don't need two and a half minutes. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Mario?
Hello. I'm one of the residents who lives in the kind of central Willow Gate Horizon neighborhood. So I've lived there 15 years now, raising my family. Just recently built a brand-new home there from my little small home that I had previously. It's a bit distraught in the process to see where this is all going, especially with this new future study area. It seems very kind of, you know, not a lot of answers around it, what's going on. It's, you know, where you're saying you're not going to do anything to affect the land use, but it just seems interesting, you know, and where we are, why it's being studied, what does that mean? And when it comes to deciding on the heights, you know, I just would hope you guys would take in consideration that you're talking, everyone's talking about the community, you know, people enjoying the area, the space. There's, you know, most people in my neighborhood there, those 25 homes, they've had those homes for close to 100 years. Different families have passed them down, and, you know, that is our community. And we enjoy walking downtown, enjoying the downtown community. So, you know, it's just difficult to hear all these people say, you know, hey, let's build these massive buildings and cast you in a large shadow so that we can create this great community. We have a wonderful community. We enjoy it. I'd like to raise my family there and continue to live there. It's very concerning to think soon, you know, I'll have, who knows, maybe a four-story, maybe a nine-story, maybe a seven-story building, you know, beaming down on me. So anyhow, I just wanted to speak on that behalf. There's a lot of my neighbors, I know, I don't see them here, maybe they're online. I'm not sure where they are. A lot of them are older. I've, you know, told them to bring them here, but they aren't able to come. So, but anyhow, I just wanted to bring a personal voice from the neighborhood. I know, you know, the world of development is what it is, you know, and, you know, I'm one voice, but I wanted to bring that voice to you in person and just let you know that there is a lot of concern. So, thank you.
Thank you. I see my colleague, and I think, I'm so sorry, Mario. I think my colleague has a question.
Question for you?
For you.
Where's your neighbor?
House member McAllister.
What neighborhood do you live in?
I live on Horizon Avenue, so between Central Avenue, Willow Gate, and Santa Rosa.
You said Horizon?
Horizon, yes.
And it's called the Willow Gate Community, pretty much?
Yeah, the area that says the future proposed study. And so that's, one of my other concerns is what does that future study mean? Is it going to be, you know, where I won't be having a home soon? So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in person wishing to speak?
All right, not seeing any. I will move on to virtual public comment, and we have Robert Cox, then David Watson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Mayor Kame, Vice Mayor Ramos, and members of the council. I'm Robert Cox, speaking for livable Mountain View. On the land use questions, while we are concerned with the impact of all the alternatives on the... on the surrounding neighborhood, like the previous speaker, we support alternative aid that would meet the requirements of the housing element by upzoning the area around Moffett to four to five stories base. We note, however, this could be eight to 10 stories if the state density bonus is applied. And under such circumstances, we don't see how an appropriate transition to adjacent neighborhood could be designed, and we're concerned about that. On the streetscape priorities, while supportive of providing wider sidewalks with trees and pedestrian amenities, we caution that retaining and attracting new businesses to Moffett Boulevard will require adequate parking to ensure the businesses thrive. To give one example, last time my car was in a collision, I took it over to the collision repair shop on Moffett. I need to park my car in the street so they can come out and look at it to give me a ballpark estimate of what it would cost to repair. Take away the street parking, the business operation is challenged. So one possibility is leave parking on one side of the street. Another possibility would be a parking garage in a business-funded parking district. In any case, I hope you come up with a good way to ensure that the parking needed to keep businesses thriving remains in place. Thank you for your good work on this, and we look forward to the next steps. I yield my time.
Thanks. Your time is up. David Watson?
I'm David Watson. I don't live exactly in this area, but I live not that far from it and walk through it to get to downtown right now. Mountain View is on track to be far behind our promises to the state. The areas near the train station are the ideal location for higher-density residential. If transitions are a concern, we should zone nearby areas significantly higher as well as a transition. It's civic malpractice to have such a low density of homes within a walking distance of the train, a train station, when the state is spending billions of dollars to improve train service. Shade itself is not a, is not something that's going to destroy people's lives, destroy people's homes. I, I think back to a protest I saw against new, new taller density, new taller homes with people holding up signs opposed to the shade that would be created by the new homes while standing across the street from the new homes because there was more shade across the street. The fact is, shade should not be considered as a significant impact. Some people might have other, other complaints that we, that are worth discussing, but all I've heard here, or most of what I've heard here, are complaints about shade. And the fact is, I would like more shade. I would like, as I said in, in the meeting, I would prefer if the city also worked on architectural arcades that would provide continuous shade to pedestrians rather than just during some parts of the year. Thank you very much.
Daniel Holsey?
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. So I don't live in this area, but I'm a Mountain View resident, and I bike through here from the train station to get to work at Moffett Field. And I really, you know, I support option B in terms of maximizing density of this area. Why not? But I also want to really emphasize the, the transportation value of this corridor for both bicycling as well as shuttles. Given that we're, we're closing off the Mountain View Transit Center, already have half-closed it off to buses as well as shuttles through the Moffett intersection, it may be necessary or very helpful for us to consider this lower portion of the Moffett Boulevard corridor as a logical extension of the transit center in order to do transit operations better. And so I have a whole idea put out in a letter as a part of public comment. I just want to emphasize the importance of using this as an extension of the transit center rather than, say, have it be primarily private vehicles. I also want to support along this whole corridor, green, complete streets, traffic calming, things that are going to get people to want to walk around, enjoy the environment. You know, I, I think a really good example of a place like this would be like Calav in Palo Alto, where you have a very close proximity to a transit stop and a very nice pedestrian experience. So, yeah, that's my comment. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any others wishing to submit public comment? All right, we'll bring the item back for council, and this will be, we'll start with council questions. So if colleagues have questions, we'll do that first, and then we'll move into this discussion and provide feedback on the two questions from staff. Any colleagues have questions? Councilmember Hicks.
Excuse me, my, my mic is falling apart. Yeah, so I have a question about kind of the interaction between state legislation and the various options, you know, A, B, and C that we're looking at. So, and I know state legislation is always a moving target. You can't tell me what it's going to be by the end of the year. But my understanding is, one, that there's a good possibility that, or some possibility, that all the area near the transit, near the train station will be upzoned to some degree. And then also that there's state density bonus at this point, which means, sorry, this is a long question with a preamble, which means that whatever we set, developers may be able to opt to go higher. Now, at the same time, I've heard that for developers, the sweet spot is kind of seven stories. So I'm wondering if we were to choose B, if that allows, gives us more likelihood, although I know with constantly changing legislation, you can't guarantee anything, more likelihood that we could enforce standards such as, say, ground floor uses, because they would not want to go much over seven, they wouldn't want to go over seven stories anyway. So they would be, have, if they did seven stories, they would have to comply with our standards. Is that a likely scenario, or am I imagining this, or what are your comments?
I'll start, and then I'll let Eric and Christian add whatever they'd like to. Of course, yes, these are all, you know, what we're listing and talking about are base densities, right? And then developers can choose to use state density bonus to go higher. You are correct that what we hear right now is the sweet, sweet spot is around seven stories. Of course, you know, construction types are ever-changing, and that could change, you know, and definitely may in the life of this plan. I think that, I think, you know, even if a project or doesn't choose to, you know, build to the max they can have on state density bonus, they are often still entitled to waivers and concessions. So you may find that even though someone maybe doesn't go to the fullest extent that they're allowed under state density bonus, they would still be eligible to waive things like ground floor, commercial, or other development standards. And so I don't know that it's a perfect correlation to say that if you went with alternative B, you would avoid those factors. And, and I'll let, you know, Eric or Christian add to that if, if they have.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Christian Murdock, Community Development Director. I think all I'll add to that initial response is, I think anecdotally, we have reason to believe that a developer may be less likely to invoke state density bonus law to waive or obtain concessions for items of importance to council like ground floor retail, if we're providing them the height and the density they may already desire. And by doing so, we make it economically more feasible for them to construct ground floor retail, for example. I'll also share anecdotally, you know, having met with various developers recently, a number of them desire to have ground floor retail in their projects to provide amenities and quality-of-life enhancements to the tenants of those spaces. And so it's not always the case that we would expect them to get out of commercial requirements on the ground floor, but there may be other incentives or reasons for them to want to invoke state density bonus law. As noted, private open space is perhaps another example, things that can add cost to construction of a project.
Okay, so that's, that's a strong maybe, I think. Okay. And then another question is, is that as we go, I mean, you can probably tell from the line of my questioning that I'm strongly interested in making sure that we have ground floor accessible use. They don't, it doesn't have to be retail, but accessible uses to the public. I'm also very concerned that we have a public realm, you know, the streets and streetscaping that is very attractive to people. So as we go up higher, how does that change the way you, another vague question, I'm sorry, the way you think about the streets? Is it less likely that you can reduce the number of lanes? Or what are the, what, what do you see as the impacts on, on what we can do, the flexibility of what we can do with the streets?
Yeah, I'll leave the opportunity open for my colleagues in the Public Works Department to, to add on or modify my response. But I'd say in general, the taller the buildings or the greater the density, perhaps the more vehicle traffic we would expect to be generated from a project. And so there could be additional demands for capacity in the public right-of-way. In addition, we would want to include transportation demand management measures that try to reduce those vehicle trips and include active transportation improvements and other features that would make walking or biking more attractive in such a project.
Hi, good evening. Jennifer Ng, Public Works Director. Thank you, Christian. That was a great introductory remarks for, for this. I think all I'll say at this point is, can't give you any definitive answers right now, today. It definitely needs to be studied. There are a number of tools in our toolbox that we can use to look at how we might be able to achieve multiple priorities that the city wants, such as a slimmed-down street, you know, nice green ways adjacent to pedestrian facilities, wide pedestrian facilities, nice bike features, et cetera. But it all, there's, there's different tools that we can use to have those all play together, but it's going to mean pretty robust analysis. So we're not saying no. Soft maybe. How's that?
Soft maybe, okay, great. And then, let's see. Oh, so my, my last question is about the future study areas. In particular, I'm thinking of like the Shenandoah area, which is not even in the city. So, and may or may be at some point in the future, may or may not be. Can we, I think I've asked this before, and I'm just always asking the same question. Can we, although we won't plan it extensively, can we add some kind of notes to it that stipulate that whatever is developed there adjacent to the street, it should, it should have a more public face, be more public-facing, have a more public-facing realm? And I am, I think if I'm reading it right, so for example, if there were a school there, they might put the theater there because they usually try to attract the republic, the public to a school theater, as one example. And not a blank wall. Can we stipulate some of those things or make some kind of notes? One, and then can we also extend the streetscaping to those, to that area or those areas?
So I'll take the first part first. I think you've hit on exactly one of the key considerations for the future study areas in trying to incorporate them in the precise plan area today, not knowing what the future development might be on these various future study areas, but not wanting to miss the opportunity to try to integrate those areas within the cohesive roadway and streetscape design. And similarly, to try to capture any incremental development or changes to make incremental improvements to that public interface between the private property and the public right-of-way. As to the second part, I think really we're focused for prioritization tonight on the Central Expressway to Middlefield portion of Moffett as having the greatest opportunity for study and potential future improvements to reimagine the streetscape. There are some additional technical and other challenges with other segments in the precise plan area, including sort of the broader citywide and regional circulation network that may provide different opportunities, if you will, that need to be studied further in the future.
Okay, so to sum up, do I get that we can make some kind of notes on them, even though we're not going to plan them at this point?
I, I think that's right. I think that's in fact what staff's envisioning, to try to provide that description of what those public areas should be in that interface so that if city projects come along or incremental development on those sites, we can at least get some of the way towards aligning with the precise plan and the framework and the objectives until the point in time when those sites trigger some sort of future study area revision to the plan. That's a deeper, more focused planning process.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Shawalter?
Yes, I have a few too. First of all, I want to thank the staff for being so good about answering all of the council questions. We really threw a lot at you this time. And, and I'm amazed at how quickly you can get the information together for us, so thank you for that. I'm going to share one of them with, just with the public because I think it's important. And that was the one about, at, at this point, really what we're doing is we're sort of setting the stage for what is going to be studied in the SEQA document. And I think that's important because that, the, well, you want to talk a little bit about why that's important? How about that?
Sure. So we have to pick, you know, we have to pick a preferred alternative to study, you know, environmentally, because we have to know, you know, what our maximum densities are that we are studying so that we understand what the impacts of those maximum densities are on that, you know, area and the, the community. So really picking the preferred alternative, you know, is letting us move forward with that study that will then inform the future decision that we make on, you know, what the density is.
It doesn't mean that we're going to necessarily go with what's studied in the EIR. It just means that we're going to study it in the EIR so we have information about it.
Sure, a different, and, you know, and, and we will study alternatives also to this preferred alternative. And, you know, the council still has opportunity to, to, you know, adopt a different density level at the end.
So you could, you, you sort of study the, a bigger envelope, and then you, you winnow it down to what really works for our community. That's kind of the idea.
Yeah, you usually choose at least, you know, two to three alternatives, and they have different, you know, densities or total units assigned to them. And then you can kind of see the differences in impacts between those alternatives.
Okay, thank you. I think that's, you know, very important about where we are in the process. And then the other one I wanted to talk about a little bit, and this is more asking you to philosophize a little bit, is that, you know, we've talked a lot and heard a lot about how we're interested in the connection to downtown. And we want to make this, you know, we want to make this a neighborhood that's really well-connected to downtown. And that, and we do. That's very important. But another thing I think about is the connection to Moffett Field. You know, Moffett Field's been there a long time, and, you know, it changes, it's, it's always changing. But, but we expect it to still be there. So I wanted to hear you talk a little bit about, how are you considering the connections to Moffett Field?
I'm not sure if Eric has anything he wants to say. He's probably the most informed on kind of how the plan has been thoughtfully presented.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Eric Anderson, Advanced Planning Manager. I apologize for my absence. So, you know, the, the previous discussion around the boundary for the project, which council provided, put the, the kind of northern terminus of the project area at the Stevens Creek Trail. So we are looking at the, the types of- So we are looking at the types of connectivity needs that are there between the kind of core, the precise plan area, and other regional transportation networks like the Stevens Creek Trail. Certainly, those connections can help promote additional connections to Moffett Field. But as far as kind of finishing that connection and going all the way across 101, that's not currently scoped as part of the project.
And I think I'll just add, I think to my knowledge, the extent of the technical information we have in terms of transportation may include some intersections up to 101, but we haven't expressly done more focused planning work about those connections, as Eric noted, given the boundaries established by council.
Well, I think that makes a great deal of sense, but I just wanted to bring that up, because they're sort of like, they're the external, some of the external things that we'll take into account when you're investigating, not the things that will be inside the study area, but there'll be things that, you know, we know are coming out, into the study area and going out of it from. And I think it's important to kind of consider all those adjacent uses. And so I wanted, I just wanted to bring that up as kind of part of the whole. And also, because when I, when I've heard people talk about this area, the changes that seem, people seem to be really concerned about are related to transportation, and they're related to housing. And those are the big themes. Also, more local business. But, but the transportation is really big here. So I wanted to, I wanted to talk about that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. No problem. And I, and I think my understanding is that Public Works is already thinking about the connection as well. All right, any other questions from colleagues? Oh, Councilmember McAllister?
Yeah, mine are, be patient with me, the rest of council members, because you've been working on this for four years. And so I'm getting back on this one when we look back years ago. All we're talking about is all hypothetical. No one's going to develop anything. They're not required to develop anything. So what we're doing is just, if somebody comes along, we have a plan.
I think, as with every planning document, we're setting the vision and the conditions for future development and public and private investment. So I think it's perhaps more than hypothetical, but this plan is not going to itself lead to the development of any particular site necessarily.
And in your notes, you mentioned that we already have a fairly new apartment complex there. We also have the Mountain View Education there. We have a mobile home park there. With the lots being so narrow, do you anticipate a particular design, height over narrowness? So what do you see if you allow this to go along, considering that there are narrow lots?
I think I'll start by saying, one of the objectives is to try to encourage lot consolidation, recognizing the limitations of many of the small lots in the planning area. I don't know if any modeling or visualizations have occurred yet in terms of types of development that would be constructed, but if so, perhaps Dan Amstey could come up and speak to that.
Great, thank you. Yes, you can come up to the podium. It's red when the mic is on, and if you don't mind speaking directly into it and introducing yourself for those who are joining us virtually.
Hello, Mayor, Council, Dan Amstey with MIG. So we've done some initial just massing models as part of the land use discussion with the community. But as we get more feedback from council and direction tonight, we do have as part of this process creating architectural design guidelines, development standards, and more detail as we go through this process. So as Community Development Director mentioned, parcel consolidation is a key strategy, but there's also a nuance that we're looking at from feasibility or how much development capacity could occur in this area, based on parcel sizes as well. So it wouldn't be one product in every single part of the corridor. It'd be a function of the size of the parcels as well.
Have you determined the capacity? Did you just mention that you said you looked at the capacity that's available?
Yes. So that's in each of the alternatives. They have a range of dwelling units as well as ground floor, non-residential.
Thank you. The other question I have, so with the new development by Prometheus, hypothetically, if there's seven stories tall, and someone across the street where the adult education is, and they put in a seven story tall, do we look at a canyon effect? I mean, is that a consideration that, you know, if we build all along here, since the lots are pretty narrow, that we have a canyon effect and that could be a detriment?
So I think we will be looking at the totality of what could be constructed there. And if there are issues identified, such as canyon effects or others, I think we would strive to include standards that would seek to avoid that or to minimize those kinds of impacts.
The concerns of the gentleman on horizon. Are we able to address, if hypothetically something goes in there, the transition? Because if something's tall as seven, if you take a four story and go with a builder density, you can go up to seven, and that's, that's going to be looking in a lot of neighborhoods. So are there, have there been any thought to the transition, or has that come in a future study?
Sure. So I think once we obtain council's direction on the alternative that they would prefer, included in this is an analysis of trying to determine appropriate compatibility and adjacency standards, things like step backs or setbacks and the like, that would try to manage that interface as effectively as possible, given some of the practical constraints of the lot pattern and design.
Earlier today, I asked you about the mobile home park, and that we have certain restrictions on the mobile home park. Is the understanding is that that's very hard to change its zoning?
So I've not had a chance to look into that question further. I would say generally, it's challenging. There's a combination of local and state components to such a change in use for a mobile home park.
And about businesses, so I asked the question about businesses and being required, and we've had issues on San Antonio. This section of road ever since has always been a problem child, that people just don't go over there because of the lure of downtown. So we're not expecting the businesses or the community space going in here to be competitive, let's say. Just, is that a safe, safe question or statement?
I think what we've seen in the analysis done so far with the existing conditions work is that a certain type of commercial use is more likely to succeed in this location, given its geographic location and the proximity of other competing commercial areas, including downtown Mountain View. And so part of our identification of appropriate commercial land uses will be informed by that study in order to try to create a use table that includes uses that are most likely to be viable. In addition, trying to incorporate some of the direction from the economic vitality strategy, creating flexibility and adaptability in the ground floors by perhaps allowing a variety of active uses other than commercial uses, or not exclusively commercial uses, could be one of the approaches to try to manage potential commercial vacancies, allowing those spaces to be built in a way that would be suitable for commercial use, if and when that's sustainable from a market standpoint, but not necessarily requiring that right out of the gate if market conditions don't support such commercial use.
Commercial use includes office space?
We haven't done the analysis of what those potential ground floor, non-retail uses might be, but I think all options are on the table from our perspective, unless council directs to take certain options off of the table at this time.
And could I get some clarity on a question that Councilmember Hicks asked about, that if you allow to go so high, the person wouldn't use builder density, therefore the ground floor, I was just trying to grasp that a little. Could you explain, by going so high, they're more likely to put ground floor versus one or the other?
So it's a, it's a complicated conversation, and one, I think, for which we're not able to provide all of the answers definitively. So with that caveat, I think the general approach that we're trying to explain is that ground floor commercial use is likely to be more feasible if we provide enough economic value in the residential component of the project. In other words, allowing greater density and height to provide an offset for what is sometimes characterized by developers as a loss-leading component, if you will, a financially detrimental component in some cases to construct and operate the ground floor commercial spaces. And so we're trying, let me rephrase, potentially if council supported a higher density option, it may provide more of an economic incentive to keep that ground floor commercial space, as opposed to providing less economic value in the residential component, which might lead a developer to obtain a waiver or concession for the ground floor commercial space in order to improve project economics.
And if we threw in a bonus density, that would, it sounds like they could have their cake and eat it too, if they did. And therefore, this building more doesn't incentivize them, it's sort of, with a builder benefit, they can eliminate more, get more waivers, no parking, no green space and so forth?
Generally, yes. I think you're generally characterizing that the way I would understand it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no others in the queue, I have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask staff. So I was looking at the existing conditions memo, and I was trying, well, maybe can staff help share at what point, or as we're discussing the precise plan, will we be talking about how to help our existing businesses? It wasn't listed in the existing conditions memo, and the economic vitality strategy was mentioned, a couple of future considerations, but I didn't see anything related to preservation of existing retail. So may staff share with me where, which, when that component comes into the mix? That'd be great. Thanks.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I think you've touched on a challenging issue, which arose in an earlier council discussion related to housing element program implementation, that there are a few direct options that the city has to try to support and retain specific existing businesses. We can strive to encourage developers to come to terms and make arrangements for such existing businesses, but we're not aware of any great tools in order to do that directly as a city policy or program, unfortunately.
Not even in the economic vitality strategy? Would that, like, could that be woven into what we're doing with a Moffett precise plan?
I think the main component of the economic vitality strategy on that point, that I remember, is the suggestion of direct financial support from the city, for which we've not identified a funding source. And so in the absence of that, we'd be looking at regulatory interventions, and those are particularly challenging in terms of specific business retention. Other options that we've been considering are trying to facilitate relocation elsewhere within Mountain View. So they may not be able to stay in the same space, but can we make a bridge with another commercial property owner to at least keep them in the community? That's one of the approaches that we're exploring for the variety of rezonings and redevelopment scenarios we're contemplating currently.
So, and I've been kind of thinking about this a lot, because when we're looking at the different land use preferences, A, B, C, does staff see a way for us to weave in opportunities for retail preservation in any of these alternatives? The one that I, if it's the same answer, that's okay. I think I'm just trying, one of the things that was in the documents was with redevelopment may come increased rent, and that could affect the existing small businesses. I don't know if, aside from what staff mentioned with the stipend, if there's, I don't know if staff had any other thoughts that they wanted to share related to that issue?
I'll just say, I think our work and our thinking is ongoing. We don't have ready-made solutions to those, to those very important and very challenging issues.
And as the, thank you to staff for doing the two walks, business walks. Did that issue come up with the businesses that participated and engaged? I think there were eight businesses who actually engaged with us, which is, I think, great, considering last time it was zero. Did they bring up maybe preservation, or could you maybe share? I was trying to go through the documents to see a little more detail. I was just curious.
Sure, sure. In my earlier walks that I did and talked to some of the business owners, I think it was a Mexican restaurant and grocery store. So yes, there are concerns, obviously, that with redevelopment of the site, can they be there? So I think that was kind of one of the questions that they had. They did have, raised that concern as well.
Okay, all right. Okay. And then just a question, as we were looking at the different community outreach. So all that community outreach is unique, or is it the same individuals and businesses? Can staff, sure?
I would say that it's, you know, what we've been doing with this particular precise plan has been, you know, trying to target a lot of the residents that are nearby, and also the business owners that are within the plan area. And so we are getting some unique perspectives. And then, of course, there's always, you know, people who are just interested in development or possibilities in Mountain View in general. And so, you know, we have that, that population as well, that's, you know, consistent for all of our outreach efforts.
Right. But, so mine is, is just trying to disaggregate the data a little bit. So we, is staff then unclear if it's this, like, you, 350-plus unique interactions, or it could be maybe some duplicates of people who came to community meeting one, and then community meeting two. It's kind of all mixed in? Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Okay, under, understood. And then could staff share, and I tried to find this, was there engagement with the neighborhood associations and groups? Did I, I know that there was the community outreach and the surveys and the other, but I know that, I know Willowgate has a community neighborhood. I don't know if there were.
I'll defer to Eric on that one.
We, you know, sent out a mailing, kind of letting them know about the last decision by council on the last study session. We did receive from, some feedback from members of that neighborhood based on that mailing. We did try to schedule some meetings with them, but I think they were, you know, the primary contact that we were speaking with was kind of just more interested in communicating by email. We are still absolutely open to meeting with anybody who wants to meet with us, talk in more detail about their concerns about the process, and kind of where the process might go from here.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I guess just one point of clarification then for the, the community is, we have the precise plan, we'll answer the two questions, and then how might the community next engage? Obviously, with the collaborate Mountain View, and then we'll be there, there'll be more community outreach that people can participate in? Is that my understanding? Before the final comes to council?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and let Eric answer that as well, but, but yes.
So there will definitely be more outreach. I will say that the, the bulk of the kind of broad community outreach has been done. We are, we are through the visioning process, we're through the kind of major land use vision process. There will be opportunities to do more targeted stakeholder discussions with businesses, developers, property owners, surrounding neighbors, other neighborhood groups. As we get more detail, as we kind of vet and refine individual standards and policies, that will be an ongoing part of the process. And of course, we, these study sessions will always, of course, be another opportunity for people to weigh in.
And outside of those formal opportunities, we have staff, primarily Senior Planner Aki Snelling, who's available at any time to answer questions from the public.
Perfect. Great, thank you. Well, those are my questions. So I'll bring the item back for discussion and to provide feedback to staff. So I have been told if colleagues can speak directly into the mic, I heard that people have been having issues hearing us, and then we may have to do straw polls. And when we do straw polls, if you could raise your hand high and proud, people are not always able to see your head nod or anything else. So we need to make sure that we're just being extremely clear for the record. So just would appreciate that. So, City Attorney Logue?
I am sorry to interrupt, Jennifer Logue, City Attorney. Could I actually request that we get verbal responses for straw poll? Because when I watch the video, sometimes it pans to just two people.
Sure.
We don't know when it's panning and not, so we might not see hands raised down at the other end.
Oh, okay. So people are hearing the issue here. Okay, no problem. So we'll need to get verbal confirmation. So we'll need to get verbal confirmation on all the straw polls, so I'll probably just have to call on you if we have to do the straw polls, is that correct? All right, okay. So why don't we start with question one, and then we'll go to question two, we'll just... I think there's two separate discussions. So one is question one on the land use, and then we'll move, we'll go through that and see what happens. And then we'll move to question two, which is more about streetscape improvements. And I believe there we need to confirm the rank and order with which the consensus of the majority of council would like staff to evaluate. So, question one, Vice Mayor Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. I will go with alternative B.
Okay. Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. I was faster than I was expecting. So I also support alternative B for the reasons described in the staff report. I also want to second strongly your suggestion, Mayor, that we focus on business preservation as an ongoing component of the precise plan development. I think that will be an integral component of achieving the vision that we've heard from the community. I had the opportunity to participate in both of the community outreach meetings, which were very well attended. I think the staff did an excellent job in arranging them and our consultants as well. I got a lot of valuable insight from just hearing what folks in the neighborhood had to say. And retaining existing businesses was elevated pretty high in the list of priorities that were heard. The only other thing I want to suggest for question one is that we request of staff, there's no deadline associated with this, but, you know, to the extent this is something that could be incorporated into existing workflows, I think an analysis of the state density bonus law, how it works, what the limitations are, what the city's limits are, but also what the developer's limits are would be really important for us, that this comes up time and time again in our discussions. And I think the council would be well-served by a really thorough and comprehensive analysis and understanding of what the state density bonus law allows for and doesn't allow for. And also incorporated into that analysis, what are the waivers and concessions that have been requested in Mountain View? There have been a number of density bonus projects, so we know. And many of the density bonus projects include a commercial or ground floor element, including the Dean, which I live near, and then another Prometheus project on Moffett that's currently under review. So that, I would hope that the council would consider incorporating that direction in the discussion tonight. Thank you.
City Attorney Logue.
Sorry, thank you, City Attorney Jennifer Logue. So we can definitely work with CDD staff to develop that type of analysis. It will take some time to do that, so I would seek clarification on when you would like that. Are you wanting that back with the next time this item comes, or is that a memo we would prepare separately and provide to council? So a little clarification would help, and then timing also.
Off-agenda memo whenever staff has capacity to prepare it.
Okay. And then, City Attorney Logue, that would be an item that we'd need to take a straw poll on?
Yes.
Correct, okay, thank you. I just want to mark it down now. Okay. Councilmember Ramirez, is that... Okay. Okay, so I'm writing off-agenda memo as soon as staff can. Is that right? Okay. Okay. Councilmember McAllister.
I'm going to go with alternative A. I'm concerned about, because a couple of reasons I want A. The bonus density is a concern because people are going to take waivers, and if you give them the max, then what else are they going to go for? I am not a big believer in building at all limits, because it doesn't build community, it builds silos, so I'm always concerned about what you're building over there. I'm also concerned about that the strip of land is narrow, and that open space, to me, is very important. Parking, trying to get people off the street, parking is always important to me. And if we have these new requirements that we have to reduce our open space and we have to limit parking, where are these people going to park? But on the streets, so we need to keep it somewhat realistic on what we're trying to build here. It is not a large swath of land, and to go to the lit stream or to the max as alternative B does, I don't think this is the right place for those kind of projects. We have some other properties and areas in Mountain View where the bigger projects would be better served. And again, the survivor of, the survival of the businesses there, they've always been struggling. In fact, every time you do something over at the History House, that affects the businesses there because they take up all the parking, and it's really tough there. So, we, this is a unique area as far as I see it. I also see that the traffic is sort of, in some sense, Moffett Boulevard is a dead-end street because there's no traffic going across from Castro, used to be a big feat to it, and everybody that would probably use it, they'd be coming off of Central, and either they'd be going to 85 or 101 down the Middlefield. So I look at this as, again, a unique piece of property, and it doesn't deserve the maximum type of development that's being suggested.
Thank you, Councilmember Hicks.
So, as you could probably guess from my line of questioning, I'm leaning towards, or I will endorse, option B, because I think it gives us, although not definitely the ability to enforce design standards and ground floor uses, I think it gives us a much better chance. And I'm, I'm really, I also concur with the Mayor and Councilmember Ramirez that one of the main things when we're looking at land use is finding a way to support the legacy businesses. In my own neighborhood downtown, the Rose Market, it's not exactly in my neighborhood, but it's across the street, across El Camino, it seems to be doing pretty well. So I would like, you know, we have, in our next agenda or last agenda item, we're talking about spending a lot of money on a lot of different things. And I think, so I think that some program for legacy businesses is something that would be really important. I think it's probably more important to a lot of people than some of the things we're currently spending money on. I won't target any particular one, but I do think it, I do think it's really important. And also, I would like to have public-facing uses, not ground floor offices. But I would be open to live work on the ground floor, as that's, you know, maybe something that mixes housing and, and a public-facing use. So anyway, B.
Councilmember Shaw... Oh, so, hello. Thank you. We did... Thank... I'm so sorry, please don't make me hit the gavel. We, we...
You can have me arrested, I don't care.
We're not gonna...
Because if you arrest me...
We did public comment on the item already. We are in council deliberation, we're doing two questions. We have, if this is about the Moffett Study Session item, we're already in deliberation.
Sir, sir, we do have public comment on non-agendized public items. Can you please have a seat, and you will be able to speak? You will be able to speak and public comment, sir? Please just have a seat. It's public comment on non-agendized items. It'll be once our meeting starts after 6:30. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So after that point of order, we'll go back to Councilmember Shawalter.
Thank you. I'm going to go with B as well, and the reason I'm going with B is because I really think it's valuable to study the biggest envelope, not that we'll necessarily go with that eventually, but we'll have the information to study it, and I think that's a wise move. And so I'm going to suggest that. I wanted to also mention, I mentioned it before a little bit, that this is, you know, the transportation issues are really front and center in everybody's mind. Making this a people-friendly place where it's nice for people to walk and bike is very, very important. But another thing that was mentioned, which I think is quite valid, is the connection to the train station and how there's a need for shuttles to be there. So that's another thing I hope we'll, you know, we'll consider moving forward. And that's it, thank you.
City Attorney Logue, you're still in the queue, are you... Okay. Councilmember Clark.
I agree with most of what Councilmember Shawalter said. I think in this case, it's a good idea to study the broader envelope, especially given the state density bonus law. And then, that doesn't mean we have to support that or those densities along the entire corridor once we've studied it, but I think understanding the implications of that level of density and its interplay with the memo and other things around state density bonus law will be helpful. So I think studying B is appropriate at this point, and then we can make adjustments down the line once we know the implications of that.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll weigh in since all colleagues have on question one. So I was most, I think most people know I lived in this area for seven years, so I am thrilled that we're having this discussion. It's too bad that we weren't able to have it when we talked about 555 Middlefield, but here we are now. And because of that, because of my lived experience talking to old neighbors, being in the area, I'm most moved by alternative C. I think one of the really unique things about the Moffett area... Yes, C. I said C. Was, I think the really unique thing about this area is the small businesses. And while I think others might see it struggling, I think it shows resilience. I have seen people reinvest in this community in terms of, there's a yoga studio that opened not too long ago, Creve Yoga, there's the music store that does instruction, there is a gym, there's a legacy floral shop, there's the auto shop that, one of our public speakers. But yes, but most importantly, it has a grocery. And I think those of us who've done EPC and land use know how difficult it is to ever get a grocery, and I really want to make sure that that survives and thrives. And I feel like having the focused mix use might help in terms of, I think, the price point in rents. So I'm really concerned about, as we see redevelopment, that we might create some options for the businesses to be reintegrated. And I think an example that Councilmember Hicks brought up is the development on El Camino and how Rose's Market, the tailor shop others, were put onto the ground floor, and then we had mixed use on top, right, with the apartments and the residences. So my, my hope is that we'll be able to see that, and I hope that if we were to do something like C, that would happen. But I hear that there is a majority for B, and I did hear two other things that I'd like to take straw polls on. So does staff need a formal vote on B? I heard five, so I don't, I don't think we need one. Right? Okay, great, okay, I'm seeing, seeing a head nod. That one's okay? That head nod's okay?
Yes, I clearly heard.
I clearly heard five. All right, but I do want to take straw polls on two items that I heard raised, just to get clarity on consensus. So the first one I heard was kind of a how to retain our small businesses as we're looking at the alternative, and then also analysis of state density bonus law, and having an off-agenda memo come to council as soon as time permits. Those are the two items that I heard, so I'll just take them in turn, if that's all right. So I think we need to do voice votes. So Shaw... City Clerk, can you help me do the voice vote? Okay, great. So if you are in favor of retaining, preserving the small businesses as part of the alternative... Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Shawalter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Kame?
Yes.
Okay, so that was unanimous. The second straw poll will be about the analysis of the state density bonus law. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Shawalter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Kame?
Yes.
Okay, great, and both are unanimous. Thanks, colleagues. We'll move on to question number two. So this one has to do with, does council agree that the priorities for streetscape improvements should be studied on Moffett Boulevard? And then they include, let's see, one, two, three, these four, and then this is also the priority order, correct, to staff?
So these are what has been prioritized by the outreach efforts and the EPC. However, you could prioritize them in a different order if that...
Right, but these are ranked in priority order. That was my understanding, correct?
Correct.
Right. So it is, not only does council agree with these four priorities, but it's also if we wanted to reorganize them in a different four-order way, then that would happen tonight, correct?
Correct, and with the reason being the potential trade-offs that may need to be made as we design this further.
Great, thank you. So hopefully colleagues understand that component as well. All right, first in the queue, Councilmember McAllister. Oh, maybe...
I'm there.
Oh. Well, maybe after you speak, you can...
Well, let me, let everyone...
You can delete yourself. I tried.
No, no. Take me off the queue.
I couldn't, I couldn't X you out. Maybe the Assistant City Clerk could almost, I couldn't get, couldn't clear you. So was that a, would you like someone else to go, sir? All right, Councilmember Clark.
Please, take me off the queue there, please. So the priority order, I'm mostly okay with a few exceptions, and there are a few things I just want to make sure that we capture for consideration if others are in agreement. I do think that wider sidewalks and the pedestrian amenities are key in this area because we want, we want folks, you know, who are, you know, frequenting this area or migrating to downtown or from downtown, across to or from the train station or to whatever is built here to have a really nice experience, much nicer than exists today. So I think the prioritizing that is number one makes sense. I think number two with the, especially with the train station and people coming to and fro, especially maybe someday with the, with the underpass, the bike and pet underpass, having the protected bike lanes instead of buffered bike lanes is really important. I recognize that maybe the entire corridor can't be protected bike lanes, there may be areas where it has to switch to buffered and back, but I do think that is an important number two. And then I think where I might differ a little bit would be, I like landscape boulevards with medians, I think they, they make everything look less, just more inviting, but I would prioritize preserving some on-street parking, but over that, but even more than on-street parking, I think we're going to be in a world in, we're talking about five, 10 years and beyond, and so I really think what's important is not only that we have maybe some on-street parking, more importantly, probably some sort of centralized parking solution, but also loading zones, because I think what we're going to experience is, you know, there might be restaurants and other things on the ground floor that not only serve the folks who are in that vicinity, but as we've seen with our downtown businesses who utilize delivery services, and, you know, there's no end to the number of, you know, DoorDash, Uber Eats, whatever cars that, you know, pull in, take a parking spot, do whatever they need to do, and then, and then go, and it would be really great to have them utilize loading zones instead of parking spots for those things. And so I think, thinking ahead to where those sorts of services can either pick up food, drop off humans, pick up humans, do whatever they need to do, and not take up a parking spot to do that would be, would be really great. And then also for loading and unloading of, you know, folks who are going to the transit station. So I would prioritize that over, over land... So I would prioritize that over, over landscape medians, although I do like landscape medians. And then we talked about centralized parking. The other two things, if you look at, I just pulled up the street view, just to confirm, once you get, if you're going from Central Expressway down Moffett toward, toward 85, when you get to Jackson, utilities are no longer underground. They're above ground, and those utility poles are in the sidewalk. So I, hopefully with wider sidewalks, we can, it would be nice to eventually underground those utilities, maybe project by project, as we, as has been done in the past. We have the same issue on Calderon, where there, you know, there are just utility poles in the middle of the sidewalk, and if you're not careful, you'll just hit one, if you're not paying attention. So I think that should be something that we think about, along with the streetscape and the sidewalks. And then finally, with respect to the neighbors, I talked a little bit about loading and centralized parking. You know, I think we're, we may need a neighborhood parking permit program for that area, because if we don't have sufficient parking, and because it's so close to transit, we can't necessarily require parking standards, which is why we might want to look at a centralized parking facility. I think people will, if we don't have some sort of permit program, will end up parking in the neighborhood more than, more than those neighbors would, would like. And some of those streets are actually quite narrow, too. So I know that, that there's a process, or there will be a process for that, hopefully, but I just wanted to bring that up, as something that we should think about as part of this.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions. So the one and two sounded the same. And then, for your number three, I wrote, centralized parking slash loading zone? Does that sound right?
Yeah, I would, I would prioritize...
Or do you want it to, or do you want to do, do you want your three to be setting the feasibility of preserving on-street with the road diet lesson?
Yeah. So I kind of lump centralized parking into number four. So basically, number four would be above number three, for me. As long as number four is expanded a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. And then, you added a five and six. Would you like straw polls on them?
Neighborhood parking permit, I don't think we need to add neighborhood parking permit. I think that's just keep in the back of our minds. We're going to have to think about that, I think. And then underground utilities is probably just something we'll think about as part of the streetscape. I don't think it needs to be a goal. I think we can skip with the same four, as long as...
Okay. So they're just comments?
We just reorder.
I just wanted to make sure, are they comments, are they straw polls? So I just...
Yeah. Others can chime in if they agree with some of those, but I don't think we need to reinvent the list.
Okay. Great. And then, just related to the neighborhood parking program, can staff remind us when that's coming back to council? I think it's the, what is it, RPPPP, Residential Parking Permit Program?
It is in a question.
Mayor? Oh, oh, sorry. Did I, I didn't get it into the council question.
So the neighborhood parking program, or the residential parking permit program, is included in a CIP project?
Ah, okay.
And so that will be in the next item?
Next CIP.
In the next...
Thank you, thank you.
You got it?
Yeah, thanks. I knew it was...
By next item, I mean next meeting.
Yes. I knew it was somewhere in the queue. So, thank you very much. All right. Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. I feel like this is trickier to respond to than question one, since I feel like the council would benefit from more analysis by the staff of what the possible configurations of the roadway might be. And it's also tricky, because I think the first three feel like, you know, desirable outcomes, and the fourth one doesn't quite fit in into the, what it is that we're ordering here. So like, I would say, my, I'm still having trouble parsing that fourth component, but if I'm understanding it correctly, it would probably actually be my, my first choice. And it's not so much, you know, preserving on-street parking, so much as rethinking what the roadway could provide for the community. So the preservation of on-street, I appreciate Councilmember Clark's remarks, and I think that's, that's forward-thinking, you know, anticipating how people will be using that, the roadway, and, you know, the recognition that there are a good number of people who utilize the, you know, those kinds of DoorDash-like services. But I'm more interested in, how can we ensure that the future of Moffett Boulevard is oriented around pedestrians, and, you know, bicycle and pedestrian safety, and comfort and convenience? So that's, that's the end goal. And I think that will require, most likely, a reduction in vehicle lanes. So that's why I feel like four is, in my mind, the most, that would be the highest priority item, but it's not, it wouldn't be the way that it's written here. It would be more, I guess what I'm asking for is for, for staff to come back with some various options, more than anything, about what, what could be done with the roadway, presuming that there is a reduction in the number of vehicle lanes. I can clarify that later, if that's helpful. But, but the, the other things, I think, are, are great. Wider sidewalks with trees and pedestrian amenities would be highly desirable, and I would hope that we can achieve that in the implementation of the precise plan. And protected bike lanes have, have been a priority for, for many years. So I'm going to do my best to be clear. So I would say, I think priority one, for me, would be, yes, but with, with the new, so four, with the nuance that it's more about reducing the number of vehicle lanes, so that we can maximize bicycle and pedestrian safety. So there's the, almost a presumption that there's going to be, rather than studying the feasibility of, of a road diet, which is how it's phrased here, it's an operating presumption that there will be fewer than four vehicle lanes, whether that's, you know, two in a central turn lane, or, or something. I don't want to presume there's a best outcome, but presuming that there are fewer than, you know, two lanes in each direction, then, protected bike lanes, wider sidewalks with trees and pedestrian amenities. And then, last, would be landscape Boulevard with medians.
Okay. So just to clarify for number four, because I'm, others might feel compelled to rework four. So it's for staff to study maximum...
Can I take a stab at this?
Oh, yes, please, please.
So I think it's just reworking how it's worded.
Right. Correct.
And it really is trying to get at the rethinking, the vision of what council and the community wants the roadway to be, which is reducing the number of vehicle lanes to maximize the number of, or maximize the ability for people to bike or walk. Which is a road diet, but it's kind of rewording it in a, in a way that really tries to capture, I think, the vision of what council and the community is looking for.
Thank you. That's helpful. It's, I think the, the challenge I have with four is, it, there's a lot in there, and it's, you know, it includes the preservation of on-street parking, which I think, you know, Councilmember Clark spoke to very, very well. But, but my, the, the part of number four I would want to elevate is the road diet, and that's because the road diet will be necessary to achieve the higher priority goals, namely, bicycle pedestrian safety. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Showalter?
Yes, I'm going to sort of follow on from that. Essentially, the road diet gives us the room to put in the bike lane, and the wider sidewalks, and some of the trees. And that's really what we, I think I'm hearing that we all want. So we want, I mean, my feeling is, yes, go ahead and figure out what the best configuration of it is. And I, I don't really want to go much further than that with direction. I kind of want to give staff the latitude to use their expertise to provide green infrastructure, good stormwater protection, shade, bike lanes, and wide sidewalks, and also, a reasonable space for cars, because we, you know, we do need cars to move back and forth there, but we don't, I don't think we need four lanes of traffic. So, so that's kind of my feeling of it. It's, it's like a whole package. So that's really my number one. But, but it's sort of like one, A, B, C, D, yeah. It's kind of inclusive. But really, I was just so pleased to see all of the thought that had gone into this, and, you know, the, the way that people have really carefully thought through it, and given us a lot of ideas. But I guess, what I'm saying is that, you know, take these ideas, and, and based on what we geographically have available to us, give us, come back with the best options. Thank you.
So your priority would be number four, as near number one, and then... We can go through the straw polls. So the, the question is, is if you're okay with the priority with which staff has laid out, but if you're prioritizing something else, then we need to get a council majority. So that is...
I, I think we're just sharing with them the concept that we really want it to be, we really want it to be active transportation-friendly, as well as a good place for cars. And what I'm saying is, it's okay with me for staff to figure out the best way to do that. And that could very well be what's here. But I, I don't feel the need to weigh in anymore. So I guess you could also put me down as an abstain on the other ones.
Okay. Vice Mayor Ramos, yes. Go ahead. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Okay. I'll, I'll actually go with the, the original setup. I, I will prioritize, first priority, wider sidewalks with trees and pedestrian amenities. Second priority, protected bike lanes instead of buffered bike lanes. Now, I understand how the weird feasibility thing is. I, I would move that for three, just for like, the sake of the easiness. It's not the on-street parking that I, I really care about. I, if you can make the wider sidewalks and protected bike lanes without a road diet, that's, that's cool. You don't have to do that work, but I, I'm starting to think about how that, that might not actually be possible without the road diet. I am supportive of how Councilmember Clark was talking about, like, in the future, looking at drop-off zones. Because I, I actually live off of the exit, the Moffett exit of 101. So if I want to walk to downtown, or bike to downtown, I go through that area. And I am learning how to bike. It's not going well, but I'm, I'm just kind of like waddling the bike everywhere, and I kind of get demoralized by the time I get to that bus stop in front of the Mobile Home Park, and then head back, and then drive downtown. So I, I think, just by having a better experience, just getting biking and, and walking downtown, and so many people essentially north of the Caltrain line, they, they go that route to get to downtown. And I think it will be something that will be really powerful, especially if we want to do some placemaking there. It's kind of all together. So I would prioritize what the, basically, out of here, one, two, I'll move the fourth one to my third choice, Landscape Boulevard, to my fourth choice.
Great. Thank you. So I hear two colleagues for that, which is one, two, four, three. Councilmember Hicks?
So I generally like the things that other council members have said, and the, the direction we seem to be moving in. Like Councilmember Showalter, I'm not sure that ranking the, the points are really going to, I mean, I can, but I'm not sure that, I'm, I'm not sure that's going to be the best explanation of how I would sum up my thoughts and what I've heard from, heard and learned from other council members. So I think the thing that most, made me think most, was when residents, I read some resident feedback, and they said that they found the area something along the lines of brown and bleak, or brown and barren. And I, I think maybe that's the thing, the thing that we haven't talked about quite enough, as other council members have, have talked. I mean, the word landscaped is in here, and we've said trees, but I really think it's about more than making it safe for pedestrians, and allowing cars, although I do want to think about cars and parking. But I think making it a place you want to be, and that I would elevate trees and greenery above what our conversation has, our dialogue so far has elevated it. I also really liked what Jennifer Ng told us earlier tonight, when she said, I think I took notes, right? She said, we have a number of tools that play together, and that's why I can't rank them easily, because maybe, I think Councilmember Showalter, maybe Councilmember Ramirez said this, that I'm really looking forward to a study of how all these tools can play together. For me, a road diet is about more than just reducing a lane, although I think, you know, now that you don't cross over to Castro anymore, there's really room for studying and reducing the number of lanes, but also possibly narrowing the lanes, you know? They seem pretty wide. And there are also other tools, like sidewalk-level bike lanes, that don't add more width, but allow you to fit in a bike lane more easily. And then there's also what one of our residents, Mr. Watson, talks about, and his mother, who is an architect, which is arcades, encouraging building arcades or candle levers to widen the sidewalk. I just think there are a lot of tools, and just pointing to two or three are, are not enough. We can also do parking like we do, like we used to on Castro Street, that alternates with trees, even something more lush. So I don't think, the way we've described it in this list doesn't lay out all the tools we have available to us. And I would like a study that really looks at where the traffic is going, and, and looks at all the tools we have, to make this a nice place for people to be, not just a corridor. And yes, highlights pedestrians and bikers. In addition to that, I strongly agree with Councilmember Clark, that we have to think about parking, and loading, and drop-offs, whether it's through, you know, like, like I said, maybe on-street parking that alternates with landscaping, whether, and the neighborhood parking, or residential parking permit program, you know, those are all, or some standalone parking, I don't know, I'm not a big fan of parking structures, but maybe. So I do think we have to think about parking and loading, and, and so forth. So, do you want me to number them?
Yeah. I think, I think the, the struggle and the difficulty is that staff, as our Community Development Director mentioned, there's trade-offs. And these are the four that elevated to the top in the community outreach. So I'm just asking colleagues to kind of play within these tools, or play with these toys that are in this box, because that is what the majority was heard in these meetings. And I think, you know, the, the nuance and how they thread together to create, like, cohesivity, they, I think staff understands that. But I think, given the trade-offs, right, in the study, obviously, there's going to be, I think, a cost. And I think there's also going to be, as we answered question one, that's going to be a factor into what we can do with our streetscape. I mean, I don't, looking to staff, I think that's why staff is really looking for input, so that they can, and I think the goal is to bring this back to council in a timely fashion. So I don't know if you have anything more to, to share?
Thank you, Mayor. Having not heard all council members yet, I think what I can distill from the discussion thus far is that no one thus far has prioritized a Landscape Boulevard with medians, and so we can put that in the fourth position. Beyond that, it seems like there's general support for the road diet, and looking to maximize active transportation opportunities, like wider sidewalks, protected bike lanes, and a very aggressive program of landscaping with trees and other greenery, to try to really beautify and make the space welcoming along the corridor, so that people want to be there, and to patronize businesses, as well as use that as a way that they get to and from downtown and elsewhere in the city.
I can give you a number. That sounds like a good summary. I can give you a number. Number one is greening and placemaking. Number two is wide sidewalks with pedestrian amenities. Number three is protect, one, number three is protected bike lanes. Number four is road diet, and thinking about parking.
And Mayor, I did leave out the, then, looking to achieve various parking strategies with on-street parking, perhaps permit parking, centralized parking location, a variety of parking strategies as well.
Okay. Councilmember McAllister?
It's good to have the last word, because I get the benefit of listening to everyone. And I'm sort of leaning towards Councilmember Showalter, because to me, the wide streets with trees and pedestrian amenities is the top... with trees and pedestrian amenities is the top thing. So I always sort of put that in and worked backwards to say, okay, if we put the wide streets in, what do we have left to work with? So that's my number-one priority.
Wide sidewalks?
Wide sidewalks. No, I'm not, okay. The wide sidewalks, thank you. So the wide sidewalks. So number one is my number-one priority. After that, if you do that, then you figure out what's left and makes sense, that's what I would go with. So it's sort of a abstain, I don't know what council, what council thought? Councilmember Showalter said the same thing, sort of, put in one thing and see what, you know, cascades down. But I also agree that if one of our goals is business retention, parking is a huge thing, and we do need to look at parking on there. The road diet, if you're going to reduce the parking, just look at what we've done on El Camino already as an example, where we took out parking. And it's a little early to figure out what the effects are, but it is going to affect businesses. And they are struggling right now, and the businesses on Moffett have been struggling for a long time. So that's a concern. So wide streets, trees, pedestrian amenities, anything that you come to council with me further on and you want wide sidewalks, I'm there. So just for future reference. But the other ones, do the whites, and then cascade down what's available, what space is available and works best. So I'm one and done.
Okay. Difficult to summarize, but I think that the community development director had that summary, maybe we can just, I don't know if we have to take a vote on that, but summary. But I will say, for the colleagues who did do their ranking of one, two, four, three, I'm most compelled by that. I think that this can dovetail nicely into the comments that I had in alternative, or the, when we were discussing the alternatives, in terms of bringing more foot traffic to whatever small businesses we're able to retain. So I think that many people in the neighborhood, they, that is their grocery store, they walk, and if you forget something, you go there, right? That's what I used to do. So I think that anything we can do to encourage a walkable, bikeable community to the businesses that exist there, so people don't feel like they have to go out of the community, is something that would help us meet, you know, our VMT and SOV target goals in terms of just like reducing those types of trips. So does staff have what they need? Do you need a vote on this? I think that no one really talked about the landscape median, so I do agree that that doesn't need to be included.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to just read back the summary as we have it and make sure, perhaps with a vote.
Okay, great. So how about, how about we'll read it in, and then Assistant City Clerk, we'll just go through and do a voice vote. Thank you.
So no median, and then council support for the road diet, which will provide opportunities for active transportation to be optimized by staff, but with a priority towards wider sidewalks with trees and pedestrian amenities as the first, and then protected bike lanes as the second, looking at robust landscaping, and then trying to find opportunities for various parking solutions, including potential on-street parking where possible, loading zones, permit parking, and potentially a centralized parking location as well.
All right. And we'll do a voice vote. Yes, no?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllister?
No, because I wanted the wide streets and then worked down instead of the road diet straight ahead, so no.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Showalter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Kame?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so that passes six one. So I think this concludes the study session item. So we'll take a brief recess. We'll convene at 7:05 for our regular session. All right, everyone, if we can gather and reconvene, if everyone can take a seat, please, we're going to reconvene. Good evening, everyone. Again, Happy Earth Day. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Mountain View City Council of April 22, 2025. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to item two. The Assistant City Clerk will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Hicks?
Here.
Councilmember McAllister?
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Showalter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Here.
Mayor Kame?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum with all members present.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to item three, presentations. Please note, these are presentations only. The city council will not take any action. Public comment will occur after the presentation items. If you'd like to speak on these items in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk now. And so I'll make my way down to the podium. And first up is item 3.1, our National Volunteer Week proclamation. Great, thank you. So tonight, we are happy to be joined this evening by Gayatri Rutna. To accept this proclamation, Gayatri was generously dedicated her time and expertise to instructing the Sewing with FAMO program at the Mountain View Public Library as a volunteer. Over the past three years, her commitment has positively impacted the community by fostering creativity, skill development, and a sense of togetherness through program attendees. The program she leads not only equips individuals with valuable sewing skills, but also provides a welcoming space for community growth and engagement, a place where participants can express their creativity and build meaningful connections. Gayatri has had, had an exceptional volunteer, making selfless contributions that had enriched the lives of many through her enthusiasm and craft-making. So we have a proclamation here for you to accept, and I'll just read a little bit of it, which it says, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the residents of Mountain View demonstrate an unwavering commitment to volunteering by building bridges across communities and uniting people with different perspectives and experiences to work toward common aspirations. And whereas volunteering empowers individuals to develop new skills, expand their horizons, and find fulfillment in making a positive impact on others and their community. And whereas the city of Mountain View expresses its sincere gratitude to the individuals and organizations who have generously volunteered their time over the past year at Deer Hollow Farm, the Mountain View Public Library, Shoreline at Mountain View, the Mountain View Center for Performing Arts, the Rangestor House, the Mountain View Senior Center, the View Teen Center, and citywide special events, as well as through programs such as Junior Leaders and Lifeguards, Cool Block Leaders, Police Explorers, Kindness Ambassadors, and Emergency Response Team. And now, therefore, I elect Kame, Mayor of Mountain View, along with my colleagues on the city council, to hereby reclaim April 20th through April 26th, 2025, as National Volunteer Week." hereby reclaim April 20 through April 26, 2025 as National Volunteer Week. Would you like to say a few words?
I've lived in Mountain View for 20 years, and I've found this community to be a safe and supportive space. I'm so grateful to the library staff for giving me this opportunity to pay this forward. And thank you for your nice words. It's always nice to be appreciated. Thank you.
We're going to, we'll take a, we'll take a picture with the City Council, but also I think that we're having our volunteer fair this Saturday? Is that right? We have a volunteer fair this Saturday at our senior center, at our community center, 10:00 a.m. to noon. And so we'll have many wonderful volunteers. And you're right, the power of a thank you. So make sure you thank a volunteer this week. We'll just take a quick picture. All right, and we have one other proclamation tonight. Item 3.2 is National Wildlife Federation Wildlife Habitat Certification for Charles Chuck Percy Proclamation. And we're happy to be joined this evening by Chuck, sorry, Chuck Percy to accept this proclamation. And will you join me at the lectern? And we're just looking for your proclamation. No, no problem. Okay, I think. No, 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 his actual proclamation. Maybe it's at my desk. Well, we will get it to you. But we're here to recognize you. And that, I'll just read your full proclamation in its stead, and then we'll turn it over to you, if that's all right. So, thank you for rolling with it, Chuck. So your proclamation, when you receive it, will read, whereas the Mountain View resident, Charles Percy, is making a difference to protect wildlife by successfully creating a certified wildlife habitat at his Mountain View home. And whereas the National Wildlife Federation, America's largest wildlife conservation and education organization, recognized your efforts to create a garden that supports birds, butterflies, bees, frogs, and other local wildlife. And whereas the yard at your home is maintained in a sustainable way that incorporates native plants, including fruit trees, conserves water, and does not rely on pesticides. And whereas your actions in creating certified wildlife habitat demonstrate how to restore a wildlife habitat right in one's own yard and community. And whereas your efforts contribute to the city of Mountain View's biodiversity goals to enhance and sustain the urban ecosystem for the long term. Now, therefore, I, Ellen Kame, Mayor of Mountain View, along with my colleagues on the council, hereby congratulate and recognize you for creating a certified wildlife habitat in Mountain View. And I can't wait to hear more about it. So please feel free to share.
Thank you. I've been a resident in Mountain View for 30 years, and the whole time I've been working on the same house. We face a global crisis of biodiversity and ecosystem health. In my lifetime, we've lost three-quarters of wildlife diversity, and it's a crisis. If the earth fails, we fail. Each one of us can contribute to reversing this by actively curating biological diversity on whatever patch of dirt or set of containers we can get access to. It's critical. Doug Tallamy wrote a great book that I read recently on how to do this. That captured what I've been doing the whole time I've been here. It's called Nature's Best Hope. I recommend reading it, as it shows how we can turn this around from our very own backyards. What each of us does matters. I'm thrilled to receive this proclamation, but I hope next Earth Day, you have to read 100, because many more do this in their own backyards. Thank you.
Well, even, even though we don't have the proclamation, can we take a picture with the council? Wonderful. Thanks. All right, thanks, everyone. We also have a little schedule change. So we'll do oral communications now, and then we'll do the consent calendar. So for oral communications, this portion of the meeting, oh, sorry. Apologies, I forgot to take public comment altogether. Would any member of the council like to say a few words on the proclamation? Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Yes, I would just like to say that both of these proclamations were very appropriate for Earth Day. And I think it was really obvious about the one for Charles Percy, but it may be not so obvious for FABMO. But one of the reasons for having FABMO is to keep fabric out of the landfill. And so they collect the ends of designer bolts, and they share them with creative sewers to make into really amazing products. And they have a sale a couple times a year, and you can, it's fun to go see the creativity. But I just wanted to mention that Earth Day connection, because that's what it is. Happy Earth Day, everybody.
Great, thank you. Any other colleagues like to provide comment on this item? All right, we'll now take a public comment for the Presentation Items. Would any member of the public, joining us virtually or in person, like to provide comment on the Presentation Items listed on the agenda? I am not seeing any. So I'll close with a public comment, and then I will open our oral communications. As I mentioned, we'll move it to this portion. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic within the City Council's subject matter jurisdiction for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the council from acting on non-agenda items. If you'd like to speak on this item or the next item in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the Assistant City Clerk now. So I think we have two people in the queue. So first is Jean Lee, and then we have Ray Martel.
I'm here to request that the council revisit an item that was passed, I don't know, 20, 30 years ago. At one point, the council with this Los Altos School District entered into an agreement so that the school district could purchase property at San Antonio Shopping Center where Kohl's used to be. That was for the purpose of opening a new school. The terms of the contract included a transfer of development rights from that site to another site in Mountain View, and the developer there paid $23 million to the school district for those rights that would help fund the new school. Mountain View itself entered into an agreement where there would be a park built at that site and shared with the school. So the $23 million went directly to the school district. At the time, the agreement stated that the school was to be a neighborhood school, either a K-6 or middle school, or a charter school could be put there if there was Mountain View students in the student body, if there were. And that was many years ago, and I think the institutional memory of Mountain View is, has kind of faded. I don't know if any council members here today were involved with that decision. But recently, there has been a lot of press in the Los Altos School District about the turmoil in trying to make a decision about what to put there. And from everything that I've been able to ascertain, they planned to put the charter school there, and the charter school doesn't want that. But the school district has not ever seriously considered putting in a neighborhood school there, as the Mountain View City Council at that time of the contract wanted. It is appropriate now for the City Council to perhaps revisit that agreement and issue a statement to the Los Altos Schools District, reemphasizing the desire of Mountain View to have a local neighborhood school on that site, and not the bullish charter school that I think Los Altos School District wants to put there. Now, you may want to review the decision to the degree that you agree with it. And if you do, you want, I request that you reemphasize Mountain View's position to the Los Altos School District so that Mountain View is not ignored. It's a very common practice in these kind of agreements to list one, two, three things, and have only the intention to implement number three, and ignore the other possibilities. But they're in there, and the agreement is very vague in its wording. I think it would behoove the council to make your position, Mountain View's position, clear to the school district.
Thank you. Ray Martel, and then Peter Katz.
I have been a resident of Mountain View for 50 years, for 50 years. I've been robbed. I've been I've been robbed dozens of times. I've called the police. They work only for themselves. And this is how it's been for 50 years that I've lived here. This is a city of, the police are corrupt. And if you don't know what they're doing, then you're not doing your job, and you need to be all out of here. Am I angry? Yes, I'm fucking pissed. I'm
No profanity, please. No profanity. Peter Katz? Peter Katz, we're moving on. Please, you're disturbing our meeting now. We don't, we don't tolerate profanity in our meetings. Thank you very much. Next is Peter Katz.
Thank you, Mayor. Peter Katz, CEO of the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to make a public comment tonight on the use of Measure G funds, particularly relevant as we're going to be talking about the work plan later tonight. With passing of Measure G last November, the city now has additional funds available for a variety of needed projects and initiatives. The chamber notes that between 5% and 15% of these funds could specifically be used to support small businesses, which we clearly encourage. The chamber has sent council a few recommendations that we feel would have significant positive impact, and I'd like to share three of those. First of all, subsidize tenants while waiting for permits, so they aren't paying rent space they can't use. This is significant cost for businesses, as they are losing money twice. They're paying rent, and they can't generate revenue because the building's not open. Secondly, fund more standard city services, especially for downtown, such as maintenance, street cleaning, trash collection, even fresh flowers in the dividers in the boxes. At present, all of these are limited due to funding and capacity. Well, let's fund them. The more attractive our streets are, the more attractive they will be to residents, visitors, and shoppers alike. Third, help with ADA compliance. Our businesses want to welcome every patron and ensure that their facility meets all federal safety and accessibility requirements. However, many do not know if they are in violation until it is too late and a lawsuit is filed. Sometimes the solution can be as simple as lowering a table, but if a suit is filed, tens of thousands of dollars will be needed to settle the case. This can be devastating, especially to very small businesses. A few years back, our city instigated a preventative program where a certified access specialist, or a CASP, went out and did a quick assessment, thus giving owners a chance to fix problems before they were sued. These funds can be used to resurrect this program, and maybe even enhance it by paying for a full CASP inspection and services, and possibly offer other financial assistance for repairs. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any other in-person public speakers on oral communications, and I don't see any hands raised online. So I'll close oral communications from the public and move back to our consent calendar. These items will be approved by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. If an item is pulled from the consent calendar, it will be considered separately, following approval of the balance of the consent calendar. If you'd like to speak on these items, please submit a blue speaker card to the Assistant City Clerk now. Would any member of the council like to pull an item? Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull item 4.9.
Councilmember McAllister?
I'd just like to comment on 4.7.
Any other colleagues? Councilmember Shaw Walter?
I'd like to make some comments as well.
Okay, so item 4.9 is pulled, and then I can take comment on the remainder. Is that correct? All right, so councilmember, whoever'd like to comment first on the remainder, the balance of the consent calendar minus item 4.9. Looking at the two who said they wanted to comment, Councilmember McAllister?
I'm going to comment on 4.7. Actually, also, I'm going to register a no vote on 4.7. There's one item on that particular request of theirs is to defund the parking. And when I was on council at the time, I actually approved this project at least five, six years ago. I still believe in the project being a great project, desperately needed for the city. But waiving the fee for parking, we're already always talking about parking in downtown Mountain View. It's a concern right now, and the impact on the community and the local residents, the current residents in there would be especially a large burden for them. And going forward, any project that, hopefully that we can do a parking structure that would help alleviate that. So I'm doing this to bring a specific attention to the parking, and if we can resolve it with co-funding a parking structure, that would be great. But I think that's the reason I'm going to vote no on it, on that one particular item. But I encourage that they find a solution and hopefully get it built someday.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Yeah, as is my custom, I just want to talk about some of these projects that I think are important, that maybe get glossed over. A couple from the Public Works Department. We, we have three related to our sewer and water supply system and piping. One is a Miramani pump station, and that's really needed to keep our, our water supply system in good working order. It provides important water pressure for us all to enjoy. And it's also an example of something that was postponed due to the pandemic, and became a little more expensive due to construction cost inflation. And then San Antonio area sewer main improvement, that's another long-term project that's very important, that we, it's very important that we keep our sewer in good working order, and that we upgrade it so that the development that we have had going on is, is the demand from that new development is taken care of. And so I want to thank Public Works for that. And also, the annual water and sewer main replacements. Again, Public Works, they concentrate on these systems so you and I don't have to. You know, as I was talking to an engineer the other day, and she was saying, yeah, if we do our job, then nobody notices, because everything is working. And that's exactly what these things are. But it's a lot of work. So I want, and it's also a lot of money. So I want to bring it to people's attention that we are taking care of our water and sewer systems, and, and that is very important. And I thank the staff for doing that. The second one, the, the annual sewer and main replacements, many of those are, turn out to be in the Questa Park neighborhood. And so in the Questa Park neighborhood and in San Antonio, there will be a few traffic issues, but they'll be short-lived, and you'll, you'll be able to get through. Then the other one I wanted to comment on is 4.7. I want to thank the Housing Department. Affordable housing on Lot 12 is something we've been working on for many years. The staff and the developer have had to persist through all sorts of project problems with this because of, of how things have changed over the time. And affordable housing is a dire need. So I just want to say we wish you the best in winning the tax credit race, so this project can go forward.
All right. All right. What, yeah, maybe a, a motion and a second for the balance of the consent calendar? And I think we need to do the public comment for it. So would any member of the public joining us virtually or in person like to comment on these items? I see two in person, none virtual. So for comment, is it Jaime, Jamie? Jaime? Vasquez? And then Alex Brown? Oh, apologies, I just saw the number. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jaime Vasquez, and I'm on behalf of the NorCal Carpenters Union. I'm a field rep for Local 405, and just want to make a comment for the Lot 12 affordable housing project that has the potential to become a great project, one that only, not only addresses the urge of housing much needed, but also gets strong example of how development should be done in Mountain View, right? As the project moves forward and hopefully receives the funding it needs, I urge the city and development, developers to commit to hiring responsible contractors, contractors who not sometimes, but all the time pay their workers a levelable wage, provide benefits and respect the standards of the trades. Even on projects with prevailing wage requirements, we still see issues like wage theft and misclassification. These are not minor concerns. These are serious injustices that harm workers and undermine the integrity of the public investment. That's why it's essential that this public, this project not only creates affordable housing, but supports good local jobs with strong labor standards. We urge that the affordable housing it desperately needs, but let's make sure that the workers who build it can afford to live here, too. Let's ensure that this project is a win for the entire community and from those who will call it home and those who will build it with dignity and security. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any others on the balance of the consent calendar. So I'll bring this item back for council action and note that a motion to approve the consent calendar should also include reading the title of the resolutions attached to the consent calendar items 4.2 and 4.3. Councilmember Clark.
So I'll move the balance of the consent calendar, which is everything except 4.9, which is, we'll consider separately, and it includes item 4.2, to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View adopting a list of projects for funding to be allocated during fiscal year 2025 through 2026 from Senate Bill 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, to be read and titled only. Further reading waived. And item 4.3, to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View appointing Peggy Huang to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, appointing Sean Foreman and Marisol Melara to the Downtown Committee, appointing Antara Bardouage and Valerie Fenwick to the Performing Arts Committee, and appointing Donna Castillo and Cassandra Magana to the Senior Advisory Committee to be read and titled only. Further reading waived.
Great, thank you. That was seconded by Councilmember Scholter. Let's vote. All right, and that passes unanimously, noting that Councilmember McAllister voted no on item 4.7. So now we'll bring item 4.9 back, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you want me to speak, or should we do the public comment first? Do you have a preference? I'll go ahead. I have a lot to say. So first, I want to express my appreciation to staff for giving the council an opportunity to weigh in on this bill. I'll start by saying our residents benefit when the cities in our neck of the woods do their fair share, when they build their fair share of housing. And what I struggle with, with this bill is that it would, if approved, essentially empower bad actor cities to take actions that would allow them to avoid contributing their fair share of housing, notwithstanding the severe housing crisis and the fact that I think state law is intending to help push cities to work in good faith to contribute their fair share of the housing that our region desperately needs. The way that the bill would empower bad actor cities is on two fronts. One, with a presumption that with adoption, the housing element is compliant with state law. This is often referred to as self-certification. A number of cities up and down the state of California did this, including the city I work for, which continued to assert that even though HCD had not found the housing element to be in compliance, that HCD did not certify that housing element, the city nevertheless said that, well, we made findings that demonstrate that our housing element is in substantial compliance with the law. And for a number of months, essentially refused to process builders' remedy applications that were submitted following the adoption of, of the housing element. And I think even more egregious, that the city council, after adopting the housing element that HCD refused to certify, never had the opportunity to weigh in on that housing element again. The council in San Jose reviewed the housing element only once. And I'll say, you know, Mountain View in contrast, the council had many, many opportunities to talk about the housing, multiple study sessions, and ultimately, we, we adopted it after, I believe it was after HCD had found us compliant. So what I struggle with is by saying cities can essentially self-certify, and then they will be essentially compliant until they're found not to be. Many bad actor cities will do what San Jose did and say, you know, great, we're compliant. Well, make findings to demonstrate that we are in compliance, and the law will essentially say that's okay. And it would, it's even more frustrating to me is the second allowance that a builder's remedy project would have to have a complete application before, in, in order to, to basically proceed into review. The, the problem I have with that is a number of bad actor cities play games and continuously ask for information. So I think many of us have a good friend who serves on a, a bad actor city, Cupertino, which did this with the Valco project, essentially saying, you know, we're not going to deem the application complete until you answer multiple bad faith questions. So it, it basically says, good actor cities like Mountain View will continue to work in good faith, but bad actor cities like San Jose and Cupertino and Palo Alto and many others will, will basically avoid to suffer the consequences or deal with the penalties of, of not complying in good faith with housing element law. The other thing I think we need to consider is recent state law actually has addressed, I think, the bulk of the challenges that this council has expressed about the builder's remedy. Last year, the governor signed into law Assembly Bill 1893 by Assembly Member Buffy Wicks, which I think addresses the most concerning element, which is the previously allowable unlimited density of a builder's remedy application. There were no development standards in state law that limited builder's remedy applications, which is how you get like the Sunset Project in Menlo Park. But state law now imposes reasonable development standards. So that, that type of builder's remedy application is illegal now, is no longer possible. And there are a number of other, the, the analysis provided in the staff responses to council questions, I think is, is pretty short, but I think the analysis also recognizes that this is a very complex law, and maybe if, if there are still questions about what the builder's remedy looks like post-implementation of AB 1893, it might be worth asking staff. But I think the key point is projects like the one that we approved on Tyrell are no longer possible under state law. And the other thing is AB 1886, which also was signed into law last year, essentially codifies all of the things that would be undone with this bill, SB 457. So I'm, I'm, I personally am not, I don't think that this bill is likely to get passed the legislature and be signed into law by the governor, since the legislature and the governor already signed into law that the parameters that ensure that there are meaningful accountability measures for cities that do not act in good faith and do not submit housing element applications or, or housing element documents in a timely manner. I, I'm not, I'm, I have a hard time supporting this law. And in fact, because I feel so strongly that we want to see bad actor cities have some accountability measure imposed, imposed on them, I would actually move that we adopt an opposed position for Senate Bill 457 and, and instead take into consideration the, the reforms that were previously adopted by the legislature and, and signed into law by the governor. So I'll, I'll go ahead and move that, and then happy to respond to. Oh, yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you for letting us know your thoughts on item 4.9. Is there any other council discussion before we bring this item for public comment? Councilmember Clark, and then Councilmember McAllister.
So just wanted to provide a little bit of background, obviously, here from other colleagues. So I was, I attended on the mayor's behalf the Legislative Action Committee of the Cities Association, where this bill took up the majority of the time. My, my impressions were, my impressions were that I think this bill came from a, well, imperfect, came from a good place. I think we learned some things through this housing element cycle that can be improved. And I think what Senator Becker is trying to do is improve some of those things based on learnings from that whole process. So for example, you know, one of my concerns, and I raised this at the meeting, was, you know, what is to prevent a city from, you know, submitting a, you know, a, a half-baked housing element self-certifying just to stop the clock, right? And I, I think, I think the intent, or at least the discussion and hearing from their representatives were that, you know, that, that wasn't necessarily the intent, and they're, and, you know, they were looking for thoughts and ideas around amendments to this to make it, to, to make it better. And that was one of the things that, that I suggested. I think there were other things like having an unlimited kind of 90-day, multiple 90-day clocks that just kind of never, where, where there's a back and forth for an unlimited period of time, kind of addressing that. And so what I came away, the, the committee ultimately voted to recommend to the Cities Association that they adopt a support position. I don't know what the cities, I didn't stay for that meeting, so I don't know exactly where they came down on that. But my impression coming away and my own personal thought was, you know, it, it was a bill that I could support if it were amended. And I think the Cities Association, at least when I was on it before, has taken those supportive amended positions before and suggested specific amendments. I understand the, the concerns. I don't think the current state law really addresses some of these other things that we've had. I mean, there are ideas for amendments, for example, would be, you know, if you're a pro-housing city and you've been a, a, you know, you've been acting in good faith the entire time, then maybe you have the benefit of a doubt to, I don't know if it's self-certify, but, or maybe the timeline has changed to where everyone has to submit by a certain period of time, and HCD has a very specific clock that they have to respond by well before those deadlines, maybe all the deadlines are changed and the builder's remedy only kicks in in certain situations. But I agree with you that there are, you know, I, I think there needs to be, there needs to be consequences for cities who aren't acting in good faith. But I also think that, I also think that there are elements of this bill that have merit, and if it's amended in a proper way, I think it's, I don't think it behooves us to take an opposed stance at this point without providing substantive feedback to that office. I think supportive amended position, for example, is probably a more productive approach, but that's just my own personal opinion.
Councilmember McAllister.
Did the city attorney have a chance to review this? And, and do you have any thoughts on this particular bill?
I did review the fact sheet, but I don't have any thoughts in general, other than my own personal opinions, which I don't think would be helpful this evening. But no, I mean, I, I, I think that this is really a decision for the council to make, you know, based on your thoughts and feelings with regard to the builder's remedy provisions and whether or not you believe amendments would be helpful.
So I have a question for Councilmember Clark. So when they had your discussions in your government affairs, did it, did the census that this bill is not finalized, it will go through your discussion, more amendments?
It was, we had a presentation from, I think it was CalCities, but it was very clear that this wasn't the final version of the bill, and they were still receptive to feedback. And just so you know, like, there were some cities at that meeting who thought it didn't go far enough and that things should be retroactive, which I'm not even sure is legal, but, you know, there were definitely folks on the other side of that that thought it should be stronger and who were, I think, very, felt very bitten by the, the prior process or agreed by the prior process. And I think there were some of us at the meeting who, who thought that, you know, there really still needed to be consequences in certain situations, but that there, there were ways to amend this bill to address some of the remaining items that weren't addressed in the last legislative session that would be helpful, I think, given our experience with this to address. So, you know, whether you, whether the council ultimately wants to take an opposed position and still provide feedback or supportive amended, I, I personally appreciate that Senator Becker is attempting to address some of these things because I think it comes from a good place. But I understand there, there are probably feelings are, I, to me, it comes, it comes down to strategy and what is the most effective way to influence legislation, which is why I probably lean more in the supportive amended camp as opposed, rather than the opposed camp. But that was more than answering your question, sorry. But does that help at all?
Okay. Thank you, because that's what I was hoping, I was getting clarity on it. I will not support the motion, because if people remember two weeks ago how they were all disappointed that this one project was going forward and that they wished something was done, here's an opportunity to be part of the solution and not just walk away and say, no, this isn't what we want. I would appreciate what Councilmember Clark said about, let's, let's give them some options, put in our concerns, and build in a, a bill that we're quite aware of the consequences of not getting your housing element done, and that we're getting these projects in Mountain View that do not fit the neighborhood. So I will not support the motion on those reasons why.
Councilmember Hicks.
So I like the way Councilmember Clark started off his, his statement that we learned some things this time around that can be improved. I think most, if not all, of us think that. So I, I also should say that, you know, I've talked to various residents who are in livability advocacy groups in, in Mountain View and said, who say they don't support builder's remedy, and I, I have told them, yes, you do support builder's remedy because, you know, what the law in its ideal form would do would, would push not good actor cities to be better actors. And, you know, from the time I was mayor, when we were working on the housing element, there certainly are a lot of cities that have, have little desire to add housing to. But I think I'm in the camp that Councilmember Clark is in, which is I would feel, I would feel more comfortable doing a supportive amended, make, making a supportive amended statement. Thank you.
Great. I'd like to comment before we go to public comment. Thank you. I see Councilmember Ramirez in the queue, but I also wanted to add, I think, just some items to note. So appreciate the robust discussion. I think in the press release about the bill, Senator Becker calls out Mountain View in, as a reason for authoring a, a bill like this. And it states, "Cities like San Jose, Redwood City, Palo Alto, and Mountain View are facing growing pressures to increase housing density while ensuring that new developments align with transportation, climate, and infrastructure plans." And then went on, if you look in his news and in the news, cited an article about how Mountain View looks to back new legislation curbing builder's remedy and cites the Tyrell project and our frustrations about that as one of the reasons he authored the bill. So I think would just look to my colleagues that perhaps just, you know, Senator Becker's been such a champion for us, including- been such a champion for us, including support for Lot 12, which was desperately needed. So I align with colleagues that I'd be interested in a supportive amended or perhaps a watch. It's a bill to watch, and so maybe a compromise if the motion maker and seconder would be, would be amenable to it, would be taking a watch position on it and seeing what the implications could be. I'm interested in your comments, Councilmember Ramirez, on how there may be other bills that are coming in, into action that may supersede what happens with this bill. It also is going through the bill process, right? It's in committee right now. So I think it's ripe for, for other comments. So if you would, you and the seconder would entertain a watch, I think it could have implications for us either way. So I would, I would ask that.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm not seeing the votes for this. I'm okay with a watch as a, as a compromise. But just to, the reason why personally I would prefer oppose is this bill doesn't actually help Mountain View. The specific problem with builder's remedy not fitting into the neighborhood, I think, is addressed more effectively by the WICS bill that was previously signed into law. That, that makes a project like Tyrell, it's just not possible anymore. So I feel like that, that was an important reform. It makes the sting of the builder's remedy go away entirely, right? It's far, the stakes are far reduced, I think. But the other thing is, Mountain View never self-certified. We, when we got the feedback from HCD, we took more time, right? And we addressed those concerns. And then once HCD gave us the okay, we adopted it. So we actually did it the right way. This bill, if it is approved as it's drafted, basically would, would do what Councilmember Clark was suggesting, right? We will adopt a housing element and it's, the burden falls on somebody else to show that it's, it's not, it's not compliant with the law. And in the meantime, there is no penalty, right? No one can submit a builder's remedy application to say, actually, you're doing this in bad faith, because you submitted at the last possible minute. And now, you know, there's another clock that's set where HCD has to review it and then, you know, make some determination. And then they can do what San Jose did and never bring it to council, right? Just say, they can make changes as the San Jose staff did and bring it to HCD. HCD doesn't look to see if, you know, if a city council or the community is being kept into the loop, they just look at the document that's submitted to them. And so what it means in practice is there will be no penalty for a bad actor city. We didn't do it that way. This bill would never have helped us. And that's why I'm frustrated by the, I'd be curious to hear what kind, maybe this is a conversation offline, but I'm not certain that there are amendments that would actually have helped Mountain View because we never self-certified in the first place. But I will amend the motion to take a watch position.
Thank you. I appreciate that compromise. And I would say, I know that the Vice Mayor and I will be participating in the city summit, the League of California City Summit, where the entire purpose is to meet with our legislators and have discussions on bills that could affect our communities. And I think this will be something, taking a watch position where we can discuss further with him and understand. And I understand as well the concerns that you're raising, Councilmember Ramirez, but it's not an adopted law, right? So I, the implications you're referring to, to me, are in the theoretical, they're not in the actual, because it's still moving through the committee process. And while stating that the WICS bill would have helped us with Tyrell, that also, we are not seeing the benefits of the WICS bill yet. So I think, you know, given when bills get enacted and then, you know, get, their timeline starts is different. But Councilmember Shaw Walter, and then we'll move it on to public comment.
Yeah. If, I'm really glad to hear that you're going to be involved in talking about this. And there's just two things that I'd like to hope that you'll talk about. One is the concept that there should be some advantage to being a pro-housing city going forward. There aren't that many of them, and we worked hard to get there. So I think that should be part of it. And then the other thing about this, you know, I was really excited about this concept when I first heard it. I thought, oh, this is great, you know? But, but then the more I learned about it, the more I thought, well, wait a minute, is this exactly the bill we need? And I think that's the question. Nobody thinks that the builder's remedy is a great program. I don't think. But, but I'm not sure this is the bill we need. But another thing that I feel really needs to be tightened up is the definition of a complete project. And I feel like it may be HCD needs to be the one that decides that and not the city or not the developer, because I think that that would allow people to, I think that would allow shenanigans to go on that we aren't happy about. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thanks, colleagues. We have two people in person for public comment, Alex Brown, then David Watson, and then we'll move on to virtual.
Hey, friends. I wrote it down this time.
All right. If you object to builder's remedy projects, the correct solution is to be more proactive and bolder in the housing element so as to be found compliant early. If we as a city had worked better with impacted communities and the HCD, we wouldn't have to worry about these development proposals. Throwing a tantrum out to the fact and trying to legislate away the consequences isn't aligned with being a pro-housing city. Removing the teeth from the housing element process helps bad actor cities, which further increases the burden on cities who are acting in good faith. I swear I wrote this before your comments, Allison. But, but yeah, I agree. Thanks.
David Watson.
I didn't pray right, and so this is going to be really messy. Yeah. The, the, we've, we've done the right, we did the right thing. We did a housing element, we didn't self-certify. And the fact is, we've, this pro-housing designation, and I think that the, the damage that taking away any teeth from the, from HCD or taking away a significant part of the teeth from HCD enforcement, that would be done by this is significantly worse than the, if we weren't within our city getting, getting homes built, right? The, the fact of, you know, state-level bill is across the entire state. And I think as Lucas kind of already covered, this probably wouldn't affect us or wouldn't have affected us at all. And going forward, it certainly, you know, I think that the next, for the next allocation, we're, we're going to be on, completely on time and there won't be any builder's remedy, period, ideally. So it won't affect us. But even, even if, even if it did, this, I think it's, it's clear that this, this is our opportunity to get some credit for doing things correctly. And we shouldn't be in favor of something that helps the cities that were pretty clearly flouting the law and telling them, okay, you should go ahead and do more of that in the future. We, you know, the, the state created the original, for a reason, and the WICS bill, 1893, I believe, I think that it already does a lot to address the issues that council had with our own issue. That's the bill. If you wanted to have been out there in favor of a bill, I'm not sure if we publicly stated that we liked AB 1893, but that's the bill that did what you wanted, that put limits on, on builder's remedy projects. So anyway, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. We'll move on to virtual public comment. First up is Robert Cox.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Mayor May, Vice Mayor Ramos, members of the council. Thank you for taking up the question of Senator Becker's bill, which modifies key elements of the builder's remedy. Mountain View is one of only two cities in our county designated as a state pro-housing city. Our city went above and beyond what the state had asked for zoning in its six-cycle housing element, not only in its first proposal, but the second. However, a time-consuming back-and-forth process peppered with continual external objections caused us to miss our housing element deadline, subjecting our city to builder's remedy proposals. We saw the worst of these proposals in the council meeting on April 8th. Any changes to the builder's remedy policy that would enable pro-housing cities to avoid its consequences is a step in the right direction. Our city is a good actor in housing policy. We should be treated accordingly by the state. I'm somewhat disturbed to hear, you know, some of the talk in the council and in public comment with a, with a reaction which I would say sounds like, so let's just do nothing. This, there's a, this is a bill that's been put forward, as the mayor noted. It's in committee now. There is a robust discussion about ways to improve it. Let's give it a chance to go forward and make builder's remedy, which is necessary in case of the bad actors, a, something that will still have that teeth while allowing pro-housing cities like ours not to be slapped for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Edie Keating. Then Daniel Holsey, then John Scarborough.
Thank you. So I like my housing elements to have teeth. And when I first learned about housing elements a long time ago, I was told you can get a little bit of good out of them, but not too much. Don't expect much out of a housing element. And it seemed true. And a little bit of history, in 2012, Menlo Park was sued because it had not updated its housing element since 1992. I mean, how's that for meaningless and having no teeth if you don't even have an updated housing element? I don't want to go back to those, that era of the housing element being meaningless. And what has made the change? It's the builder's remedy. That's what's in the newspapers. And we don't know how many cities jurisdictions would have pending housing elements still if there wasn't the threat of builder's remedy. So I'm sorry that Mountain View has, had to approve some, you know, developments, builder's remedy that don't really fit, but it will be housing. And across the state and across our region, having those, that threat of the builder's remedy, I think really does make a difference and is important. And otherwise, you'd have cities just doing a meaningless housing element and having it not come to fruition and not come to housing. And so thank you to the council for all your comments on this. Thank you to giving me, adding to my reading list. I've got to go read AB 1893. And I like the idea that HCD should weigh in on when a development proposal is complete. And I would be fine if you voted no on this, but not approving it is acceptable. And, you know, I'm looking forward to finding out what limits there have been already put on builder's remedy projects. And seeing this on consent calendar was kind of a jolt and caused me to, you know, quickly review this. And I think it does have too much removal of the risk of builder's remedy, and I don't think it's the right bill as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Holsey.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, so I think Councilmember Ramirez made a lot of great points. And so I think opposing this bill is the best option because it's not really for us. I think the other thing is that a lot of our problems with the builder's remedy would just be avoided next time around by us getting the housing element in on time. I know, having engaged with this process, that we were told over and over by people both on council as well as city staff that, oh, it's not that important to get it in on time. Oh, it's just kind of a paper pushing process, you know, it's, it's not that big of a deal. I think what the builder's remedy gives us and the lesson that we have learned is that it is actually important to get it in on time and maybe even have a safety margin so that you can go in back and forth. I think that lesson has been learned. I don't think next time around that removing the incentive to not do that is good. I think it's better to just learn the lesson and do it right the next time. And so absolutely oppose this bill. I don't think it was really, had very good intention behind it. And I think it was a misread of just kind of the political environment right now. So that's my comment.
John Scarborough.
Thank you for the, bringing this up. And I like that Mountain View is so serious about putting in housing when so many of our neighbors are not. And I think removing the teeth of the builder's remedy is not a good, good thing to do, and it appears that this bill would do that. And likewise, it's not good to punish cities like Mountain View by getting things we don't want if there is a minor problem, but we're eventually doing what we should be doing towards getting houses. So we've got to have something that moves the other cities along. I don't believe we can do this all by ourselves, and I don't want to see us punished. So I would oppose unless amended. And if the best we can do at this point is to say we're going to watch it, I would support that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other people in the queue, let's vote. So it is a watch position on this item. And that passed unanimously. So now we will move on to item six, our public hearing. Item 6.1 is our Mountain View 2025 Water System Public Health Goals Report. Utility Services Manager Mike Vazquez and Assistant Public Works Director Lisa Au will present the item. If you'd like to speak on this item in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the Assistant City Clerk now. I will begin with the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Mike Vazquez, Utility Services Manager. With me tonight, we have Lisa Au, Assistant Public Works Director. And we have a short presentation on the 2025 Water System Public Health Goals Report. To start off, we will go over a couple of key terms, the first being public health goal, or PHG. So these are non-enforceable goals that are set by the California Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment. These goals are conservative in nature, and they do not take into account things such as feasibility or economics in their development. As an example, for cancer-causing chemicals, PHGs are set so that not more than one person in 1 million drinking the water daily for 70 years would develop cancer. Next, we have maximum contaminant level, or MCL. So these are the water quality standards set by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency or the California State Water Resources Control Board. These are the legal limits that water systems must abide by, and exceeding an MCL can result in a water quality violation, public notification, or other penalties. So in terms of PHG reporting requirements, California law requires water providers serving more than 10,000 connections to report every three years if there's a PHG exceedance. So for this report we have tonight, this will cover calendar years 2022 through 2024. And in the previous three-year cycle, we did not have any PHG exceedances, so we were not required to file a report for those years. In terms of water quality monitoring, city staff sample over 2,000 water quality samples annually. And it covers the full spectrum of water quality monitoring, including primary health-related standards, secondary aesthetic standards such as taste, color, odor, et cetera. We also do disinfection monitoring to ensure treatment systems are working correctly, and we even take samples that are for unregulated contaminants to help our regulators set new standards in the future. Now, for about 600 customers within the city of Mountain View, they receive water from Cow Water. Cal Water. The city does not operate or regulate Cal Water's water system in Mountain View. But we do provide links to Cal Water's website on the city's water quality page. Cal Water, while not regulated or operated by Mountain View, they do follow the same water quality regulations as Mountain View's water system and do post their water quality information on their website. So again, this report does cover calendar years 22 through 24. And in that three-year period, we did have one PHG exceedance, and that's hexavalent chromium, also known as chromium VI. This is a heavy metal commonly found in low levels in drinking water. Potential sources include historic industrial leaks. And most likely the case for Mountain View, it can be naturally occurring in rock formations, and it's often associated with groundwater. Chromium VI is linked to health issues such as cancer when ingested. And in regular groundwater, I'm sorry, in regular monitoring of the city's four groundwater wells, we did get results of 0.36 to 1.6 parts per billion. And that was over the PHG goal of 0.02 parts per billion. And the MCL for chromium VI is, which is the water quality standard, is 10 parts per billion, which our results were well under. Now, it can be hard to kind of wrap your head around what a part per billion is. So a common example we use is a part per billion is about equal to one drop of water in an Olympic-sized swimming pool. So we are talking about very small concentrations in this. As part of the PHG report requirements, we are required to identify the best available technologies for treatment. The U.S. EPA did identify anion exchange as the best available treatment technology for chromium VI. Based on our results, we would need treatment at each of our four groundwater wells. And putting together some high-level estimates, we would be looking somewhere in the order of $48 million for construction and around $9.6 million for annual operations. And it's also worth noting that the studies we used to put these estimates together, these were primarily focused on meeting the MCL. So to meet the much lower threshold of the PHG, there is some uncertainty in terms of feasibility and also the cost implications of those low numbers. Now, the results of the city's chromium VI monitoring are below the MCL. So there is no recommended or planned follow-up actions, but I do want to reiterate that the city's water meets all water, all regulatory water quality standards. I'd add also that all of the water quality monitoring information that we we take in is compiled into our annual water quality report, we also called the Consumer Confidence Report. We produce these every year and put them up on the city's website. And the next water annual water quality report will be coming out this summer. That completes the presentation and happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Does any member of the council have any questions? Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Yeah, first of all, I thank you very much for this report and this work. I think that, you know, this is just, this is so important for government transparency to to collect this data, to make sure that our water supply is safe, and and to share it with people. It's just really, really vital. It's a wonderful service. But I wanted you to talk a little bit about what we use those wells for. Why do we have these wells? And how is that water used?
Thank you for that question. The four groundwater wells that we have in service in the city of Mountain View are a pretty vital resource. While they only represent about 2% of the water we actually use within the city, if there is ever any issues coming about with our imported water, which is the vast majority of the water that comes into the city of Mountain View, those those wells become our lifeline. Those are the last remaining sources. They're completely under our control, and they are local in nature. So we're not, we're not reliant on extensive pipelines or other agencies to provide it. And it provides us the necessary resiliency in crisis or other issues in the system.
So for instance, if we were to have a major earthquake, or there was to be a major earthquake that disrupted the imported water supply that we depend on, we would have this water supply while that was being repaired?
That is correct.
And that's really what it's for, right? Okay. Then my other question is, why do we run these on a regular basis if we only need them when there's a real emergency?
Another great question. So we run each of these wells very sparingly. We do not run them very often, about once a week for three to four hours. But we run them to make sure that they're going to be ready when we need them in service. The worst-case scenario is you you let these sit off on the side, don't exercise them at all. And when something unfortunate takes place and you need them, they aren't ready to to function correctly. So we ensure that these are always ready to go, and if we need them, they will they will serve the public.
Thank you. That's a great answer. And we have to have public comment, right? Okay. But yes, I thank you.
Councilmember McAllister.
I'm one of the 600 that you're referring to. So is there any tie-in that if our 600 lose whatever we have, we have access to the Mountain View water?
We have opportunities to partnership with Cal Water to provide waters to the customers within Mountain View that receive Cal Water water. But also, we have tie-ins with other neighboring agencies. The region, in terms of sharing water resource, is very close together. We have different operational opportunities, whether that be inner ties that exist and can be operated, or whether that's sending field staff out to find hydrants to connect. But at the end of the day, our goal is to keep everybody in service, and we find creative ways to get that done.
Could those creative things be done in a day or two in case of a major emergency? Like an earthquake or something?
There's a lot of variables at play at that point in time. However, in terms of emergency response, our field staff are highly trained, very specialized professionals that we come out to get the job done. And we don't, irrespective of what is going on, we are here to ensure that Mountain View residents receive service. But also, let's let's remember that we have another service provider that will be responding as well.
Councilmember McAllister, just also want to add, from time to time, even for fires, when a Cal Water customer, if there's a fire incident and there's not enough water, the fire department will start to look for hydrants in the city system to help fight the fire for those residents.
Well, so that's my sort of next question is, the fire hydrants where I live, are they Cal Water or city water?
Specifically, I don't know. However, they're very easily identified. Cal Water hydrants are yellow, and the city of Mountain View hydrants are silver. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member questions? All right, not seeing any. I'll open it up for public comment. I'm not seeing any cards, not seeing any hands. So I'll bring the item back for council deliberation and action. And I see a motion by Councilmember Shaw Walter, seconded by Councilmember Hicks. And I believe we can vote.
I am Assistant City Manager Audrey Seymour-Ramberg, and I am joined tonight by Principal Analyst
Great, and that passes unanimously.
Laurel James. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank the other members of the team supporting this process. That includes Arn Andrews, Assistant City Manager; Lindsay Hagan, Assistant Community
Big thank you to staff, really appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to item seven.
Development Director; Amanda Rotella, Acting Economic Vitality Manager; and Lindsay Wong,
Item 7.1 is our Council Fiscal Years 2025, '26 and '26, 2026, '27 Work Plan Project
Senior Management Analyst. The purpose of today's meeting is for council to discuss and act on staff's recommendations
Prioritization. Assistant City Manager Audrey Seymour-Ramberg and Principal Management Analyst Laurel
for projects for the fiscal years 2025 through 2027 council work plan, which will come back
James will present the item. If you'd like to speak on this item in person, please submit a blue speaker card to the
for council's adoption with the budget in June.
Assistant City Clerk now. We'll begin with the staff presentation.
This slide illustrates the process and timeline for work plan development and for check-ins on the implementation of the adopted work plan. We are at step four. At the last meeting on February 25th, council affirmed the existing seven strategic priorities and put forward 16 possible projects. Staff analyzed the projects in accordance with the criteria approved by council on January 28, which was step one. As part of that report's description of the work plan process, these criteria include: alignment with the seven council strategic priorities, feasibility within staff capacity, including lead departments, support departments, and upfront and ongoing legal support; the need for additional budget appropriations for capital investment, contract costs, or staff; whether the project was discretionary; whether there were dependencies on city obligations or other city efforts; and the estimated duration and a timeline to accomplish the scope of the project. As part of this analysis, staff developed a proposed scope for each project to estimate and describe what could be completed within the two-year work plan cycle. This analysis is discussed in the body of tonight's report and summarized in Attachment Two in your packet. All projects contribute in a significant way to one or more strategic priority. This chart shows the count of projects and their primary strategic priority. All priorities are represented, most with one or two projects. The strategic priorities with more projects are organizational strength and good governance and intentional development and housing options. No new staff are needed within the two-year timeframe. Most projects are anticipated to require a medium level of staff capacity. Some projects will take a rather large share of staff time, with some ultimately requiring additional staff, such as the increase in pavement project volume required to increase pavement condition index to 71. One of the recommended, of the recommended 16 projects, seven will require additional limited-period funding in the fiscal years 2025 through 27. Most of this, or 875,000, would be recommended for funding in fiscal year 2025, '26, and an additional 200,000 would be recommended for funding in 2026, '27. Other projects have funding appropriated already or don't require capital contract or staff costs above and beyond current staffing. In addition to these short-term funding needs, some projects will have significant fiscal impacts beyond the two years of the work plan. These include the end of gas flow by 2045, the increase of pavement condition to a PCI of 71, the complete design and construction of the Stevens Creek Trail Extension, and the implementation of a citywide broadband network. Staff also considered the remaining evaluation criteria and determined that all of the projects are discretionary, including a project to achieve a certain PCI, even though pavement projects in general are considered nondiscretionary. Half of the projects have dependencies on other plans or grants. For example, the housing elements' relationship to the R3 and low- and moderate-income housing ownership projects and the Valley Water Grant for smart meters. As for duration, it has been possible, in the most part, to develop scopes that anticipate that staff anticipates can be completed within the two-year timeframe. In addition to the analysis, by staff, members of the team I mentioned at the outset of my presentation met with each of the council's 10 advisory bodies. The 16 projects, as moved forward by council in their February, your February 25th meeting, were provided to the bodies. Each member was asked to indicate what they considered to be the top three projects. Attachment Three shows the number of commissioners who included each project in their top three, as well as comments on themes. The slide shows the seven projects that were selected most frequently. Staff considered all of the information generated in consideration of the criteria and also the overall approach approved by the council on January 28. This overall approach has been referred to as quality over quantity. Hallmarks of this approach are being able to deliver on the highest priorities by, first, considering and aligning the council work plan projects, along with other projects and ongoing work, as a comprehensive perspective on how the city is working to achieve the council's strategic priorities. It also is supported by right-sizing the work plan to match available staff and fiscal resources. The target, as communicated throughout the process, has been to adopt a work plan of 10 to 14 total high-visibility projects, depending on project size and lead department. While staff's recommendation is two more than this upper range at 16 projects, more than half of these are existing projects. And where possible, all projects have been scoped to be feasible within two years. This slide shows the 16 staff-recommended projects. I'll note that these have different numbers than came out of the February 25th meeting. And there were also some slight changes in the titles for these projects. They've been amended for brevity, clarity, and to fit with proposed scope. I would also note that the numbering doesn't have any bearing on priority order. And, you know, as I mentioned in the previous slide, you can see here which of the seven The purpose for tonight's item is for council to approve by motion the projects and scopes for the work planned as listed in Table Four or with other council direction. Staff's recommended process for council's discussion of the projects is to focus first on three projects for which there is considerable context and different possible ways to scope the two-year work. These projects are the end of natural gas flow, citywide objective design standards, and pickleball solutions. Council members will then identify if there are other projects from Table Four that they wish to discuss. Next, I'm going to summarize the context and scopes for these three projects that have been suggested as one area of focus. First, the end of gas flow by 2045 will require converting all city-owned and private natural gas-dependent buildings, systems, and appliances. This would result in extensive costs for the city as well as for residents and businesses. As yet, no path has been charted, including by the other jurisdictions who have adopted such a goal, to address technical, legal, and financial challenges associated with enacting a prohibition, making infrastructure upgrades, and funding new systems and appliances. In addition, the capacity of the electric grid is uncertain. you can see here which of the seven projects are new. The purpose for tonight's item is for council to approve by motion the projects and scopes for the work planned as listed in Table 4 or with other council direction. Staff's recommended process for council's discussion of the projects is to focus first on three projects for which there is considerable context and different possible ways to scope the two-year work. These projects are the end of natural gas flow, citywide objective design standards, and pickleball solutions. Council members would then identify if there are other projects from Table 4 that they wish to discuss. Next, I'm going to summarize the context and scopes for these three projects that have been suggested as one area of focus. First, the end of gas flow by 2045 will require converting all city-owned and private natural gas-dependent buildings, systems, and appliances. This would result in extensive costs for the city, as well as for residents and businesses. As yet, no path has been charted, including by the other jurisdictions who have adopted such a goal, to address technical, legal, and financial challenges associated with enacting a prohibition, making infrastructure upgrades, and funding new systems and appliances. In addition, the capacity of the electric grid is uncertain. As stated in Table 4, the recommended scope for fiscal years 2025 through 27 is to adopt a resolution stating the city's commitment to achieving end-of-flow by 2045, working with SVCE to conduct legal analysis and peer research of feasible options, studying electric grid capacity, and preparing a resiliency study with strategies to support resident electrification. And by that, I mean electrification of resident buildings. The development of citywide objective design standards involves research, engagement, analysis, and drafting to define the desired standards. Engagement includes direction from council and input from residents, design professionals, the development community, and city committees and commissions. New standards will require city code and precise plan updates for consistency and enforceability. Standards for all development types and locations would be a multi-year project requiring significant contract resources and staff time, potentially additional staff. Consequently, staff is recommending a phased approach. Phase 1 would focus on multifamily and mixed-use development types. It would benefit housing and affordable housing production, and it would be consistent with advancing other city goals, such as green spaces and walkable residential areas. Finally, pickleball in Mountain View, as in other places, is a popular and growing sport. The sport of tennis is also growing. It is very challenging in a fully-developed city like Mountain View to meet pickleball players' needs and balance with other community needs for active recreation such as tennis and open space. In the interim, there are unfortunately no quick solutions to satisfy the needs of both tennis and pickleball players. There is a feasibility study underway, however, for permanent court options. Staff has met with representatives of the pickleball club and the tennis club and have heard their shared interest in what the pickleball club is suggesting to expand the footprint of the existing tennis center into a portion of Cuesta Annex. Staff recommends adding this Cuesta Annex space, as well as the city-owned San Rafael property, to the feasibility study. Staff also recommends expediting the study, which depends on streamlined community engagement and the ability to receive council direction on the selection of a site in the fall of this year. The focus on tonight's meeting, however, does not include site selection or site layout. Even with an expedited process, it is not possible to complete pickleball court, site selection, design, and construction in the remaining eight months of 2025. However, staff does anticipate being able to start construction within the two-year work plan cycle. Since it is not possible to identify and construct both new permanent and interim courts in an expedited manner at the same time, relying on the same staff and the same funding, staff recommends a modest increase in the number of pickleball play hours at the Rink Storf Park in the interim. That concludes staff's presentation. The recommendation before you this evening is to approve the recommended projects and scopes as stated in Table 4 and to incorporate into the fiscal, which would be then incorporated into the fiscal years 25 through 27 work plan for your adoption in June. Staff also recommends that you provide direction to staff and affirm the scope of the work plan for the three specific projects which I discussed.
Great, thank you. I now will open it to council questions. And staff is seeking confirmation of the recommended project scopes in Table 4 or other directions. The suggested process is that we'll do council questions now and comments after the public comment to focus discussion on the three projects mentioned in the staff presentation and any other projects council wishes to discuss. So do any member of the council have questions about the process for the discussion and the approval of projects? No, so I see Councilmember Michelle Walter first, and then I can go to you. Okay. Can we take question now, or should I just go straight into public comment? Okay. Great, we can do council questions. Or?
One option for the council and the mayor to consider is whether you would like to focus on process questions before public comment, hear public comment, and then do both questions and discussion after public comment.
Okay, so we're just clarifying up here. All right, so if you have a process question, now is the time. If not, we'll go straight into the public comment, and then we'll go into questions, discussion, deliberation. Yes, Councilmember Hicks, did you need a clarification?
I'm just clarifying the process, which you just did to some degree. So we're asking clarification questions now, which is what I'm doing. And then the public will comment, and then we'll do project questions, and then we'll do the three steps separately here.
Correct, yes.
Discuss the three projects, then identify other projects to discuss, and then finalize.
Okay, correct, yes. And I will, I will work with staff to make sure I'm taking note of everything, but we thought it might be.
It's complicated, I had to. Thank you.
We, we tried to find a way that it might make most sense. And our public has been waiting patiently, so giving them the opportunity to comment before we get into things is probably best, right? Okay, so let's see. So if we have anyone on the line that would like to comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom or press star nine on your phone. So I think we'll make it two, given the amount of speakers, we'll make it two minutes. And then we'll have Mike Rogers on behalf of himself and Noah Banks. So we'll double that time to four minutes. And then we have Cliff Chambers, then we have Daniel Shane, then Katie Zoglin, then Bruce Carney. So first is Mike Rogers. Apologies. Then Cliff.
Thanks for your time. We're going to talk about recreation, pickleball, and tennis. I've spoken to the council before. I've submitted my drawings for the courts at the annex at Cuesta. Can you hear me? Is that better? Can people online hear me? You know, I actually drew up the drawings that add the pickleball courts to the existing hardscape at the ends of Courts 6 and 12 on the north side of Cuesta. When the proposals, the RFP was first started, there was a drawing on the city website before the RFP was decided upon for the contractor to come up with a proposal that showed six courts taking out the dog park, which is probably the best dog park in the South Bay, let alone Mountain View. So I thought that was kind of tragic, given that we had these parts of the courts on the north side. They're not really used, bleacher areas. So a third of the space for eight courts is already hardscape. We're not taking out, you know, that much of the open space to add a lot of courts really quickly. And as I looked at the scale drawings, as I looked up the size of courts and looked at the other parts, the part of the annex just adjacent to Courts 5 and 6 looked pretty opportune as well. Because we have a shortage of tennis courts as well. If we had two courts that had dual use, we'd have an additional two courts or an additional eight courts. And a large portion of that space is actually taken up by three or four very large oleander bushes, which have been uncontained growth and have been trimmed in decades. And they're toxic to humans, and they're hyperallegenic to humans, as well as they don't really, not indigenous at all. So I think the opportunities are interesting. But I did that as a draft, submitted it some number of times. Now we've been having the pickleball community and tennis community meet. And we all agree, it's taken way too long. It's just 10 years old, and Palo Alto, infamous for being really slow, already has 15 dedicated permanent courts. Sunnyvale has 16 dedicated courts, looking at adding more. Other communities, Stanford has added courts. We don't yet have any permanent pickleball courts. And we have hundreds of people that are waiting on a weekly basis, on a daily basis, waiting for pickleball courts, often for hours, just to play their first match. I'm a tennis player, I don't play pickleball. I love the idea that we have a large community, very social, and need to be serviced. And I think we need to look at what the implications are. They've not been paying for the courts, we pay for courts, the tennis courts. We've always had a different model. The historical model of Mountain View was called the community model long before equity inclusion became common political terms. 20 years ago, we went through three or four RFP processes before we finally convinced the city to use the community model to decide on the tennis operator, which then became Mountain View Tennis after Tim Foley left, after John Sevillay left. But we were unique. We had to impart under the city that we don't want to benchmark what the other cities are doing. We're different, we've always been, had the most diverse uses of courts. When Todd Disley had been running Mountain View Tennis for a few years, he goes, "Mike, you know, there's 38 different functional uses of the courts for the community here at Cuesta. We have the high school, USTA Junior Leagues, we have the Catholic Championships, all kinds of things, right?" Rink Storf Park has almost as many, probably the second-most functional uses. So we've really had a great loss. Mountain View Tennis has lots of programs, have been greatly compromised, right? But we've got agreement with the city, I mean, with, between the clubs, about what makes sense for an interim solution. What we ask is that you move as quickly as feasible with the city staff's recommendation and approve something for finality to get some number of pickleball courts available to the pickleball community as soon as possible. Thanks for your time and attention.
Great, thank you. Cliff?
Cliff Chambers, and I'm here on behalf of the Mountain View Pickleball Club. First off, I'd really like to support the Pickleball Solutions work plan that staff has crafted. I think it really hits a home run in terms of what's needed. Remember, Councilmember Showalter nominated this project because of health interests, not only physical, but the emotional wellbeing of, of Mountain View residents. As you keep that in mind, please, as you go through your deliberations. The pickleball community and the tennis community have had several meetings and correspondents over the past month, and we agree on a lot of things. We really support, strongly support, what Mike Rogers just talked about, is the 16-court facility at Cuesta Park, right adjacent to the existing courts. It's a very exciting potential for a complex. We really do support the San Rafael Park consideration. We support, we, both clubs really support all of this, the public-private partnership, and if it helped to facilitate the, the building and funding of the courts. We'd really like to see something expedited and actually built in 2026. Hopefully, you can make that as a strategic objective. We are really amenable to working with the tennis community. We've had some really good meetings in terms of crafting a new hours plan for Courts 3 and 4 at Rink Storf Park. I think we can do that in fairly short order, so staff can focus on the permanent solutions. And the permanent solutions, there's no easy solutions. You've gotten a lot of email correspondence about it. Nobody's going to be completely happy. And I hope you, and that's why you have city councils, so you can make these tough decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Shane, then Katie Zoglin, then Bruce Carney.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts about the, one of the city's projects, Item 10, which is the city code cleanup, which I assume are updates to the municipal codes and ordinances. The, we'd like to ensure that the scope of the biodiversity and urban forestry plan includes updates to the city municipal code and development review process to incorporate and provide urban forestry, highway vegetation barrier, and biodiversity criteria for private and public lands. The criterion should be used to evaluate new projects. Secondly, it should include standards that protect existing forests, highway vegetation barriers, and biodiversity hotspots. There needs to be a correlation between the work that's being done, ongoing project, the urban forestry, the biodiversity urban forestry plan, and updating the municipal codes. We need to ensure that, and specifically talking about Municipal Code 41, which is a parkland dedication, or fees in lieu thereof. It's important that when we update this code, we should update this code to protect existing important natural resources. I think we can all agree that our precious urban forests, natural urban forests and their complex ecosystems are something that we need to protect. We can do this through the Municipal Code, Chapter 41, Parkland Dedication. I also understand that the biodiversity and urban forestry plan can also inform this municipal code update. I also want to.
Thank you, thank you. Katie Zoglin, Bruce Carney, then Jean Lee.
Good morning, good morning. Good evening, all. First, I'm talking about the pickleball issue. First, I completely support city Mountain View building more pickleball courts. It's a very popular sport. However, I think Cuesta Park is the wrong place for them to be built. For, there's a number of reasons. One includes, I strongly oppose paving over any green space that we have. We have such a limited amount. Number two, I take walks in Cuesta Park almost every day. I've lived in the Cuesta Park neighborhood for over 20 years. I take walks there almost every day. I love the peace and tranquility of the park. Pickleball is a noisy sport, and I really think it would have a huge negative impact on, on the environment in the park. Second, I encourage city council to ask staff to broaden the scope of the feasibility study to consider additional locations. So I appreciate the fact that now the San Rafael Avenue property is on the list. I think that's great. There is reference in staff report to some private-public partnership. I don't know if that has to do with additional private property that's being considered. It was a little bit unclear. But I don't know if there's other areas that also could be considered that would not mean paving over green space, such as there's huge parking lot areas across from Shoreline Amphitheater. That, that could be a location. Another location might be some of the other parks that, that were mentioned in the initial study. You know, some of these may be good ideas, some might be bad. But I think at this point that the feasibility study should be broader as opposed to narrowing the scope so that a good location is selected. Third, I think outreach, I, I think it's fantastic that the pickleball and tennis community have been speaking with, with each other. But there's two significant areas that have been completely left out of these discussions.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, your time is up. Bruce Carney?
Thank you. I bring you Earth Day greetings. And I would like to reflect on two recent losses, former Mayor Matt Allen and Pope Francis. Thinking about their lives, reading their obituaries, I think all of us need to consider what will our legacy be? Will we, in fact, leave the world a better place than we found it, or not? And it's pretty clear to me that my life is dedicated to trying to deal with the climate crisis as best I can. And I appreciate that you have joined me in that quest by voting unanimously to make end-of-flow by 2045 one of your seven priorities, sorry, one of your strategic priorities. You may recall that you received over 20 individually-written emails from various members of the community asking for you to vote for this priority back in February. And I'm sure they're all delighted that you did so. One of the things of concern, of course, is the large amount of money that will be spent by somebody in order to accomplish end-of-flow. But I want to put the big numbers in the report in the context of the LA fires from January. According to the Los Angeles Times, damages from those fires will exceed $250 billion, or approximately $25,000 for every person in all of Los Angeles County. It's 10 million Los Angeles County residents. In Mountain View, since we have about 2.2 residents per household, that would be $60,000 per household in damages if we were damaged by a fire of the, of the kind that hit Pacific Palisades and Altadena. So, yes, it will cost a lot to protect our environment, but it will cost a lot if we lose it as well. And I am sure that you will do the right thing in this Earth Day meeting. Thank you.
The tenants of the community model of Mountain View is unique. No other city in the Bay Area, if not the country, operates tennis the way Mountain View does. It developed from the tenants, from Don Schaefer's efforts to guide tennis in its infancy in Mountain View. In fact, we named a park after Don Schaefer next to McKelvey for his contributions to Mountain View tennis. to Mountain View tennis and Mountain View recreation. So what are the tenants of the community model? The first is that lottery for the tennis players. You can sit there, chat with the people who play, hassle them, whatever. You need this understanding of the community model in order to design the facility properly to conduct, to enhance this kind of association. And I'm afraid that, and I'm hoping that the pickleball community will be run by Mountain View residents and not by an outside association. Also, many outside companies will come-
Important one. The one thing that I think is really comes across is the fact that there are other communities, the fact that there are other communities are looking at the same issue, and some of them have much more aggressive dates than we do. And I don't know if we're going to make the aggressive dates, but they're going to have to put in effort to do this. And it seems to me that this is a common problem, that we all need to be, that this is a common problem that we all need to address in terms of getting the right kind of people who are willing to work on this. I think it'd be a good idea to use some kind of corporate model or joint model to try to move that forward. And thanks for your opportunity to do it, and thank you for prioritizing this, which is a very important issue.
Great. Thank you. Steve Everett?
Hello, my name is Steve Everett. I'm a Mountain View resident. Along with the tennis and pickleball communities, I strongly support the consideration of building pickleball courts adjacent to the Questa Park tennis courts, and also consider the city property on San Rafael Avenue. How hours on these shared courts? Thank you.
Thank you. John Scarborough, then Marina.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm reflecting on this Earth Day about how as a species in a country, we've not really met the challenge. In fact, we're back. So end-of-flow of natural gas is a necessary step to meet our goals for reducing climate change, and it's a big step. And I remember about 10 years ago, when Mountain View took on another large goal, we were looking for electricity supply without, you know, without carbon emissions, and we joined with other communities and should do even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Marina, then Sharon, then April Webster. It looks like your mic is unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you. We'll just restart your timer.
Oh, thank you, sweetie. Sorry.
No problem. Go ahead.
Okay, I was saying, I was saying, I want to sincerely thank you for including a volunteer policy in your council priorities and for directing staff to move forward on it. This means a great deal. When we helped the Girl Scouts create a butterfly garden at Heritage Park, we were turned away several times, not because of the project, but because the city didn't have a policy in place. It ended up taking nearly four years and only succeeded thanks to the Qantas Club's $4 million insurance policy. Most volunteers don't have that kind of backing, but they do have the passion to help. This policy opens a clearer, more inclusive path for community members to contribute to projects that serve the public good. Recently, I was honored with an Excellence in Historical Preservation Award from the Daughters of the American Revolution, and that recognition supports our next steps, creating a virtual tour of Heritage Park and Immigrant House, and the launch of a third-grade field trip program that connects students-
Great. Thank you. Sharon?
Hello. My name is Sharon Blam, and I live near Questa Park. Thank you to the Mountain View city staff, Mountain View Tennis Club, and Mountain View Pickleball Club for meeting together and coming up with proposals for pickleball. It is so wonderful to see everyone working together. Pickleball has great-
...streets from pass-through corridors into places where people want to spend time. This kind of shared vision is a gift, but vision alone isn't enough. Without the right tools, we default back to car-first designs, the very status quo we're trying to move away from. That's why I'm urging you to take this next critical step. Support Project 11, the citywide objective design standards. This is one of the most effective ways we have to bridge the gap between policy and the built environment, to make sure the values we agreed upon show up on the ground, starting with private development, and later on, hopefully with updates to the standard construction details for public projects. And while we take that step forward, I urge you in the strongest terms to vote no on Project 13. PCI increased to 71. Staff has been clear to switch shift funding away from walkable, bikeable, climate-ready infrastructure, the very priorities this community has called for, in order to meet aggressive repaving targets instead. Repaving isn't necessarily bad, but are we repaving smarter or just more? A blanket PCI risks treating every street the same without asking what corridors matter most based on use and network role? How do we align paving with our climate goals, bike plan, green infrastructure, and stormwater requirements like MRP3? We have limited dollars, so let's invest them where they matter most to make this vision real, to match our strategic priorities. Thank you so much for your leadership and for this opportunity to comment.
Great. Thank you. Lonnie Horton, then Jeremy Chen.
Sorry about that. Hi, I'm Lonnie Horton. I'm a Mountain View resident and a member of the tennis community here, as well as the Mountain View Tennis Club. I'd like to speak in strong support of the proposal to build a permanent pickleball facility at Questa Park in the annex area next to the tennis courts. This is a true win-win solution for both the pickleball and tennis communities. It also has minimal impact on other park users and on neighboring homes. I think this can become a model of cooperation between our communities for the larger Bay Area. I also urge the council not to approve any further cannibalization of the tennis courts at Rinkstore, which will greatly reduce access to the second-most widely-used tennis courts in the city, and jeopardize the continuing viability of the Mountain View Tennis Club. The Rinkstore courts should be reverted to 100% tennis use upon completion of the pickleball facility at Questa. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jeremy Chen, then Mary Daddio.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Chen, and I'm a resident of Mountain View since 2001. Honorable council members, I am here to show my strong support for the proposal brought forth by Mike and Cliff for the construction of permanent pickleball courts adjacent to the tennis courts at Questa Park. First, I want to look back a little bit. Looking back, in 1972, Mountain View's population stood at approximately 51,000. That same year, the city inaugurated the 12 lighted courts at tennis at Questa Park. And six years earlier, in 1964, eight lighted courts were established at Rinkstore Park. So in just six years, Mountain View added 20 tennis courts, demonstrating foresight and dedication to community well-being. Fast forward to today, our population has grown to approximately 82,000, a 60% increase since 1970. Despite this growth, the number of public tennis courts has remained largely unchanged. Meanwhile, the popularity of pickleball has surged, leading to the addition of the three dedicated pickleball courts at Rinkstore Park, which planned, with plans for more. I firmly believe Mountain View has the capacity to support both communities without compromising one for the other, and I believe the city of Mountain View has the capacity to expedite the building of these permanent pickleball courts. Let's aspire to match the vision and efficiency our cities exhibited in the 1960s by investing in facilities that serve all residents. By doing so, we honor our history while embracing the diverse recreational needs of our growing community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Great. Thank you. Mary?
Good evening. Regarding setting end-of-flow by 2045, this goal seems more concrete than our current carbon-neutral goal. We can see this in the list of challenges that staff has identified, such as specific city buildings currently using gas and equal pool. For that reason, I think it's important we do adopt this goal so that we start the necessary planning and conversions, and so that other property owners in Mountain View are motivated to begin planning as well. Regarding the costs, I recently saw that 20% to 50% of post-earthquake fires are caused by gas leaks. So removing gas from our city will reduce the risk of future costly fires. Regarding pickleball, I urge the council to remove the Questa Annex as an option. In the past, when development's been proposed in the Annex, there have been a large number of people who have spoken about how important the Annex is as an undeveloped open space. Walking in the Annex is quiet and peaceful in a way that we can't find elsewhere in Mountain View, and because pickleball is so noisy, it would ruin one of the things that makes the Annex so special. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Disly, then Bruce England?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Todd Disly. I was here last time. I'm the operator at Mountain View Tennis. I'm super excited about the future of racket sports. It's great to see such an awesome collaboration between the pickleball, the Mountain View Tennis Club, the community-oriented operating model that Jean Lee talked about, Mike Rogers' plan. It's super great. I love play. I love people active. And it's been, it's been amazing. It's an amazing time in the racket sports industry. It's booming. Tennis, pickleball, padel, everything is going crazy with racket sports. I love that you're giving everyone a voice. Green space is super important. This is one of the most beautiful parks in America. I've been around the country. It's gorgeous. You've got to pay attention to the space that Jean Lee talks about, but this is Silicon Valley. This is Mountain View. These sports have people that love it. It's a great athletic thing for families. It brings community together. Let's be the cutting edge. We need something quick. Tennis is booming. Pickleball is great, but there's not enough courts. This takes the least green space, the least temporary solution, but you can dream bigger. The tennis facility hasn't been touched since 1972 when it was built. It's falling apart. We're trying to keep it together. This is an amazing opportunity. I love this community. I hope that you guys can make something happen. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Bruce England?
Thank you, Mayor. Bruce England, Wisman Station Drive, also a member of Mountain View Coalition for Sustainable Planning, Green Spaces in Mountain View, and Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition. The comments I want to make really have to do with our paving over our city for any reason at all. And the Questa Annex is an important part of the city that gets, has been discussed historically many times over the years. People are very adamant about protecting it. All the proposals that have come along to use it by paving or building on it have been soundly rejected by the community. So nothing against pickleball, but building into the Annex for that project doesn't make any sense to me. And the PCI index up to 71, my major concern about that one is that as far as I can tell so far, you don't have data that tells you what the trade-offs are between the cost of doing repaving up to PCI 71 and what you gain through freeing up funding for other projects, including active transportation projects. We absolutely want to see active transportation projects funded, but if it costs more to do the work that frees up funding, then that just doesn't really seem to make a lot of sense. And I think you really need to know that information in order to make a sound decision on that one. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Any other public comment in person or virtual? All right. I am not seeing any others, so I'll bring the item back to count, for council deliberation and action. So why don't we start with if there's any questions on the projects, and then we'll go into the three specific projects after that. So this is just for the, for the others. Councilmember Shawalter?
Yeah, I have a question about the index numbers, the PCI index numbers. It seems to me that there was some bill that meant that there, that you had to get a certain PCI score in order to get funding. And I'm wondering, is there such a bill? Is there any state requirement that we maintain our roads at a specific PCI level? It's on.
Thanks. Hi, Jennifer Ink, Public Works Director. So I think what you're referring to, Councilmember Shawalter, is 2016 Measure B funds. And what those are predicated on is that when a jurisdiction has a PCI of less than 70, those funds may only be allocated towards pavement restoration. Once you achieve the PCI goal of 70, then you have a little bit more flexibility on how to utilize those funds. But I think that's what you're thinking of and what you're referring to.
That is what I'm referring to. And what is it again?
2016 Measure B funds.
2016 Measure B funds. Okay, that's definitely it. And that's, that's essentially a Santa Clara County thing or a Bay Area?
Yeah, it's general, it is definitely one of the funding sources that we utilize for paving, and it's common, all the cities in this area get an increment of Measure B.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Yes, that's what it is. So, so, so that is really one of the inspirations for choosing 70, as what we're going to shoot for, right?
My understanding is that there was a prior understanding that staff is working under, prior to me getting here, that Mountain View's goal in general was to keep a PCI of 70. And so that is a goal that the staff has been working towards already.
I think that's true, and I think it was related to that, those Measure B funds. Thank you. That's what I was confused about.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. So there's already three projects: the end of natural gas flow by 2045, the citywide objective design standards, and the pickleball solutions that we've identified for discussion. I'll ask if council members have any other projects they wish to discuss, and they'd like to add to this list. Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. Number nine, 2026 revenue measure, and number 13, pavement condition index increased to 71. Thank you.
Councilmember Hicks?
Okay. Number 12, pedestrian mall vacant storefront activization, activization, I guess I said that right, program, and the autonomous vehicle pilot, which I am not going to ask you all to vote for, but I'm just going to make a statement on it. I think I've said.
What number was that again?
Well, the numbers we're reading off of it doesn't have a number because it's not recommended. Number zero, or number 17, whichever number you want to give it.
I like that. Zero. Okay. All right. So I have, okay, 9, 13, 12, 0. Councilmember Shawalter?
Yes, I would also like us to discuss a little bit the low and moderate income homeownership project, and just a little bit about our priorities.
Okay. So looking to staff, perhaps it might make, how should we do them? What order shall we do them? So where's the three that we already had identified, and then now I have five others that have been identified. So shall I take them in numerical order? Did you want to go over the three that were already identified? How about those three first? Okay, great. All right. So colleagues, we'll go, we'll do the pulled items after we do the three that were already identified. So the first that we'll discuss, unless anyone has anything else, you want to pull something else?
No, no, no. I'm ready to talk about end-of-flow.
Oh, okay. So the first of the three projects will just go in turn in the order that is listed on my agenda here. We'll end of flow natural gas by 2045. Vice Mayor Ramos?
Thank you, Mayor. So I put this on my, my, my list of projects to move forward, largely due to, I was largely inspired by a lot of the young environmental activists to really look into our future and see what can be. I know that it is- I know that it is kind of a heavy lift, and a lot of it really does seem daunting. What I'm asking staff is to view this as a North Star. Move forward. Take a look at what it actually takes for it to get done. I'm trying to... We know... I do feel like the direction is going in a general way that I like. But largely, I do want us to think about this as... I don't want it to be an empty goal, but I want us... It's going to be... None of us are going to be here on this dais when this deadline comes around. So there could be so much that can happen in that period of time, so much in technology, so much in the world. I'm very optimistic about our future sometimes, most of the time. And so that's why I really want to push forward in it. And I don't think it's as daunting as some of us might be afraid of.
Councilmember Showalter.
Sure, I'll just follow up with that. It was also on my list. And I think setting a goal for the end of natural gas flow is just setting the goal and outlining a general plan of what it takes to get there, which is basically what staff recommends that we do in the next two years. So I was very pleased with that. This is really an aspiration. And as time goes on, we can make informed decisions about what actions to take and how we'll pay for them. And as Vice Mayor Ramos said, there's going to be so many changes in technologies and circumstances and that sort of thing. But we would like this to be, I think, a North Star. That's a good descriptor.
Councilmember Hicks.
So yes, I also like this as an aspirational goal. I think that, you know, 2045 is a ways away. And there are other cities that have more near-term goals. So I like it as an aspirational goal, not as something we panic about and spend a billion dollars on. I have to say, some of the main things that will make this happen are individual homeowners and apartment owners, but especially I'm thinking of homeowners changing their water heaters and so forth to non-gas appliances. And I think it's good to have this goal. I know a number of people who've done remodels, and they just don't seriously look into the non-gas appliances unless there's something really steering them in that direction. And we also, for example, have a fireplace store downtown, which, actually, it's a very good one. But they sell a lot of gas fireplaces when they should really be switching to electric. So to some, to a large degree, I think it's getting... Having this North Star gets the word out that we want people to go in that direction. And that's a big piece of kind of publicizing this. That's a big piece of what I would like to see.
Councilmember McAllister.
Yeah. I was reading the staff report, and when the B started showing up, the billions of dollars, it was a concern. And it is a heck of a goal. But as we go with this goal, our aspiration, we need to be very transparent about the true cost of what this is going to cost to the community, to the residents. I mean, we're talking for the city alone to redo all the pipes or to take the pipes out. I mean, it's billions of dollars, and a lot of time it's going to be major disruption. I know it's out in '45, but people need to know what's going to be really expected at that time. Hopefully, technology will come along, and there will be a substitute for natural gas, or propane, I understand is one, or whatever there is. But to dismantle, if I understand, they're going to dismantle the underground pipes and so forth, and electricity needs to be upgraded. It's very important that people realize that right now, if they were to do it, it's going to cost them thousands of dollars. And as our population ages in this area, and it will change over time, a lot of folks will not be able to afford it. And I'm sure the apartment owners need to get a head start of really letting them be part of the solution because it's going to cost them millions of dollars, and you're going to get a lot of pushback. So just make sure that as we go with this, we keep a running tab of, here's an expected cost. So it's not a surprise that when you get closer to your goal, oops, we got to do it, and people are going to... So please be transparent. Please look at alternatives. And I was glad to see that you were including looking at the electric grid because if the grid's not there, you know, we don't want more blackouts. But that's my thoughts on that.
Councilmember Clark.
So I agree with those comments and what staff has recommended in terms of the scope and setting the goal in the North Star. Following, you know, conducting the legal analysis at an appropriate time, I think some of that is still unsettled. There's been some... There was a big setback, and then there was movement, hopefully, in a good direction. But not all of that has been litigated to the highest levels. And then, once it is, then legislation, you know, there needs to be legislative activity to respond to that. And so I think following that, as well as the peer research, makes sense. The two other items, the studying the electrical grid, which I agree with. I think the electrical grid will naturally respond to increases in demand. We're seeing that now with data centers and other things. And then the resiliency study makes sense, too. I think the latter two probably fit within... I want to take advantage as much as possible of the decarbonization plan, the existing work that's going to go into that. And I think that thinking about this holistically, it should be one of our North Stars and one of our goals, and a really important one. But I think it needs to also fit into the broader decarbonization strategy, too. And so I hope that some of this effort can be done as part of that strategy so that it's integrated into our broader decarbonization strategy instead of kind of orphaned on its own and a totally different process.
Great. Thank you. Vice Mayor Ramos.
To be fair, when I submitted this project, I said as part of the decarbonization plan. So I'm hoping that staff kind of took that as part of the direction. But yeah, it is the hope that, like, a lot of our projects, they kind of interact with each other. They kind of rely on each other. We're relying on staff to slot them all in the right places.
Great. Thank you. And I think just my comments are, you know, as this moves forward, just being able to understand what other municipalities are doing, right? Our peers are doing would be really great for us to understand. And then what implications may or not be coming from the federal government. I feel like there's always things changing there and not sure how that might impede any of this goal. So do you need a vote on this? I'm hearing yes.
I think there's going to be a motion at the end regarding the total list and scope. So I didn't hear any change to the recommended scope unless I misheard.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. It might just be easy just to take them as they go for the three items.
Is that okay?
And then once you do your final recommendation, then we know what your direction is.
Yeah, and I think I'll just do voice votes. Again, Assistant City Clerk, just I want to just make sure because we have these three, and then we have an additional five. So I think just going project by project, it might be the way to... And then I think that'll give staff the clarity they need. Okay, great. So all those in favor of this project, will it just be a voice vote?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Showalter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Kame?
Yes.
Great. So we'll move on to the next item, which is our citywide objective design standards. So I believe this was proposed by Councilmember Hicks, is that right? So I don't know if you want to speak to it first, and then if colleagues have anything they'd like to add, if you want to queue up.
So yes, I was actually super happy to see that among the committees and commissions, this one got kind of by far the largest number of votes because I was enthusiastic about it, but I didn't know that so many other people would be. And we've gotten, if your... Our email is public. If you've read our email, we've also gotten a lot of support for it there. And what I was... And I think people have... So there's a question from staff about exactly what we're including in this and whether it should consist of two phases. I do think it's a large... If done well, which I want it to be, it can be a large project. So I'm fine with putting it in several phases as staff has recommended. And I think they... I think it was, correct me if I'm wrong, it was mixed use and apartments first.
Multifamily, yes, and mixed use.
So that seems fine. What I'm... I have to say, the public comments that we've gotten... So I'll say a couple of reasons that I put this forward. One is that I think if we have good, clear design standards, that that helps us streamline how we work with developers. You know, that we can just tell them, I guess the... One of the things I've said to developers is, if we told you everything you built had to be painted blue, you would do that. You don't really... Most of them don't really care that much as long as they know in the beginning what they're supposed to do, usually, unless it's something very costly, you know, they'll be willing to do it. So that's kind of my purpose, to get, tell them upfront rather than in a drawn-out way. Also because when I worked for the city of San Jose, we did have design standards, and I found them useful in talking to developers to be able to pull them out and say, this one and that one applies to you. But people have brought up... So it's for streamlining and getting better development and clearer communication. But members of the public have pointed out something that... I'm glad they did because they were more focused on it than I was, which is upgrading the public realm, the way that developments interface with sidewalks and with the street, which I think is one of the most important things we do. You know, we don't tell people how to do their interior decoration, thank God. But the streets are, you know, the streets are all of ours. They belong to all of us, and we do want design standards. In particular, this reinforces our active transportation plans and also green streets and ground floor activation, which is why I think staff put the mixed-use buildings. So ground floor activation so that when you're in a mixed-use area of town, the ground floor is kind of speaking to you and welcoming you. So those are all the things that I want it to do. I'm a little more, as the public has pushed us in this direction, a little more focused on, you know, how the buildings we're talking about interface with the sidewalk, you know, how the public feels welcome, what makes you want to walk, where you find room for street trees or pocket parks, or, you know, those kinds of things. Because... And making the ground floor the floors that people can see better as they walk or bike by, really the ones that we focus on in terms of design and materiality and so forth. And punched-out windows, which is something we've talked about before. So that's what I'm looking for. And I don't know if there's anything else that staff feels they need to hear regarding this?
No, thank you.
No, okay.
Okay. So seeing no other hands in the queue, I think we could just do a voice vote if you are in support of this new project for citywide objective design standards.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Showalter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Kame?
Yes.
Thank you. Great. So we'll move on to the next item, which is pickleball solutions. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Showalter.
Well, I was delighted that the tennis and the pickleball community are collaborating together, and they seem to support staff's recommendation. And so do I.
Great. Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Hicks.
The only thing I would add is just, there were... Maybe I don't need to add this, but there were some specific places, all good potential near-term places. And I wonder if a line of just any other sorts of places that might come up and be available in the midterm, or midterm, near-term. You know, just making sure that, you know, I mean, these may be the final and best places. But if any place else comes up, I would not want to close... In the near term, I would not want to close us off to that.
Okay. Vice Mayor Ramos.
I'm glad that the war between tennis and pickleball has come to a good armstiss. I'm hoping there's another player in this game as we have looked at finding a solution. Now we have open space advocates that are concerned about the paving over of open space land. I'm hoping that we can find a good solution for everyone involved. It's going to be... I'm glad that, like, we are starting to see some light at the end of the tunnel kind of thing. I am happy to see that San Rafael is an option. San Rafael, right? It's an option. I'm... There has been always this hesitancy on the annex. And just tread cautiously. And we can study it, but I think, just be careful on that.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. So I didn't... I'm happy to support advancing this through the process. One thing that some members of the council may want to think about is, from time to time, we establish ad hoc subcommittees to delve deeply into a topic, like we did with the Revenue Measure. I guess that was last year or the year before. And I wonder, given the complexity of this issue and the challenge in synthesizing input from different constituencies who have sometimes opposing perspectives, for members of the council who have more energy than I do, to maybe work with staff through an ad hoc subcommittee and just really work through some of these sticky details before this comes back to council. Because I love public input, and, you know, I read all of the emails I can. But I feel like this is one where it's going to require, I think, some political thought and clear strategic thinking with staff before it comes to the council, where we might struggle if we haven't had some eyes and ears on the topic before, you know, it comes to us for final approval. So I'm not suggesting that that be something that we determine tonight, but I would love for members of the council who have been, you know, working with the community more closely than I have on this issue to think about whether that might be a way to work through some of the challenges before the council revisits this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McAllister.
Councilmember Ramirez, could the Park and Rec take on that task?
Well, they did, and they voted on a proposal that hasn't come to us because the community wasn't... There are different perspectives in the community. And I think the reason I say council subcommittee is because I think the Parks and Rec Commission probably has felt like they've done that work for us, and their perspective is just going to be a little bit different from what we might get from council members.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just going to turn this over to the city manager and also staff, who I know have been working on this for quite some time.
Thank you, Mayor. So I appreciate what Councilmember Ramirez is saying. I believe that staff is pretty far down the road on this, to study it. And I would like to invite our Community Services Director to come up. You're welcome, to talk... To talk a little further about where staff is at with this. And that might provide a little more context for council because I'm not sure that you all would need an ad hoc committee. So maybe our director can provide a little more feedback.
Thank you, City Manager McCarthy, for the opportunity. John Marshon, Community Services Director. So as you are aware, we have started a feasibility study looking at certain locations. Some of the locations that were discussed tonight have been looked at already and were not moved forward. But if any others do come up through the process, we'll add those to see if they're feasible and look at those.
those to, to see if they're feasible and look at those. And so, as far as the process, we have gone to the Parks and Recreation Commission. They had recommended the Dog Park area within Questa Park, based on community feedback. We were looking for other options other than just that one. And so we do have the consultant on, on staff to, to work with us in an expedient way. And so we'll be able to, to get through this. And I think as we go through the process, we can determine if that, if the council ad hoc committee may be helpful through that process as, as we go through it and listen to, to the community feedback.
Great, thank you. Did you have more, Councilmember McAllister? Okay, great. All right. So I'm not seeing any other hands in the queue, so I think we'll just put this forward. And I believe this is the, the staff recommendation for this item, correct? All right.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Showalter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Kame?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So I think that, rather than going in numerical order of the number of the project, I'll just go in order of the, of our colleague who pulled the item. So we have two from Councilmember Ramirez, so we'll just take them one at a time, if you don't mind. So I believe it was the Project 9, the Revenue Tax Measure 2026.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. So I don't have a lot to say about the 2026 revenue measure proposal. I'm not opposed to it. I think it has merit. But before we go too far down that road, I think it's important for each individual member of the council to determine whether they have the capacity and interest in being the champion for the measure, right? I'm, I am not going to do it. So if I'm not going to do it, and no one else wants to do it, before we spend $200,000 of, of, you know, city funding exploring a measure that will be orphaned on the November 2026 ballot, I think we would, we would want to think about whether this is politically viable. So I'm, I'm going to support it, but I, I think before we go too far, someone really needs to step up and say, I'm, I'm comfortable fundraising, building, community support, talking to folks who might be skeptical, and ultimately securing the majority that we might, we might need for this. And if it's a bond measure especially, that two-thirds threshold is, is very high. So something to think about. Thank you.
You have a volunteer, Councilmember McAllister.
No, no, I was just praising Councilmember Ramirez. So my question is, you're saying don't go down the path, but shouldn't we, since you've done this before, you, you're a great asset. Should we, my question is, should we get what we're going to put on that ballot before we start asking people? And would this process get us that information of what we want to put on that ballot?
I guess it, so it could, but it depends on your level of comfort with spending money on something that no one in the end ultimately will, will invest time and effort running a campaign for. We don't know what the community sentiment will be until we do polling, but polling requires an expenditure of public funds, right? So we, even if we find, you know, hey, there's a path to victory, right, we find 55% of the voters might support it, and we only need a simple majority, that still requires effort, right? So I would say, before we get to a stage where we start polling and figuring out what the public sentiment is, someone needs to say, yes, I'm, I'm willing to step up and run a campaign.
But shouldn't they know what they are advocating for?
It's your, I'm going to vote yes on this?
No, I'm just, no, I'm just, you've been through the process. I haven't. That's why I'm asking. If we go ahead with this, is this going to determine some items that would be on the, you know, money for parks, money for public safety? That's what I was asking, so.
Yes. And I see Assistant City Manager, Arne Andrews, coming up. But I think from my perspective, it was very helpful to be a member of the ad hoc subcommittee that looked at this. And I chose to run the campaign because I was comfortable championing what ultimately came out of the work of that subcommittee, right? So you're right, it could inform one's willingness, but if everyone feels like they're, they're just not interested in doing that work, then that's something I think the council should think about sooner rather than later.
Great, thank you. So I have the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So to provide context for how this really unfolded, the Council Finance Committee served as the Revenue Ad Hoc Committee as well, which is how Councilmember Ramirez and former, former Councilmember Maticek, I think, became leads for the revenue measure. So I would be looking at the three members of the Council Finance Committee, of which I know Councilmember Ramirez is one of them, but that's typically what would happen. So just to provide further context. So I understand the sentiment. I'll also say that for many years, the city has talked about doing a potential TOT, or a transient occupancy tax measure, but there are certainly other options that we may want to explore, which would come out in polling. So I think the sentiment is certainly well-taken. We will need a champion or two.
And if you'd like, I can just add further context to timing. Aside from the valid concerns of the council member, we would likely be coming before you with a study session in the fall, probably the November. That would be followed by a recommendation to form an ad hoc committee. That committee would start meeting December, January, February. Based on the deliberations at the ad hoc committee, we would then look to bring on a pollster that would start looking at polling in the March-April timeframe. Final development of ballot language would come before you in the May-June timeframe. And so you would be looking at expenditures for a pollster in sometime around March. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ramos?
I think to add some context for the concern that Councilmember Ramirez had, we have a neighboring jurisdiction. They had two ballot measures. One, literally what we were looking at doing a revenue measure and then a charter amendment measure, and both of them failed because the work it takes for, like, to have a leader pushing it through. I think the charter amendment, they thought, because they thought on the basis that it made sense, it would just go through. But it, it, it takes campaigns to win things, and that's probably why Councilmember Ramirez has a little bit more concerns about that. The good news is, is that the people on the Finance Commission don't have to run for anything in 2026. But, because that was the reason why I wasn't really a co-chair in the, the campaign, even though I was on the CFC. I, I think this is probably something we can move forward. It's just something to think about as, when we, when it does finally come forward to the rest of the council.
Councilmember Hicks?
So I'm just curious how it was arranged on council. I was not on council then, but when you all did, but some of you were, when you did the business license tax. Because the, like, was it a council, was it the Finance Committee, and who, who on council was associated with that? And the reason, one reason I ask, I think at least three council members were on council when that happened. One reason I ask is that I was actually, I was running for office then, and I was, for the first time. And I was actually on the, it was like a citizens committee, and Megan Fraley was the chair, and I was a person on it. And so that seems like, did you all at that time just hand it all off to Megan Fraley? No, you don't remember? How was that arranged?
The members were Chris Clark, myself, and former council member Lenny Siegel. And so we were actually, the, the item was, we were going back about the TOT and this one, and whatever reasons, and Chris will probably have more detailed knowledge than I would, that this came out ahead, and because people were sort of saying, hey, there's Google, they got some money, and we figured that was a fair way, not necessarily to Google, but to all the other ones, a fair way of, of getting the money. So it just evolved. We did have the three of us, Lenny, I thought, was leaning a little more than I was, and then Chris was probably leading the whole group. He was, he was stealth at the time, but he was doing it. And I don't know how Megan came along, but maybe he can remember.
It, it's varied over the years. When I, in 2008, I ran and lost, and part of it, but you want to be more involved in the community, right? Help us with this UUT tax. And so I was like the citizen person. But then there's, there's usually a group of council members who help draft the ballot statements and all those things that's done by committee, but, and then there have been cycles where some poor soul ends up doing the majority of the work, and the rest of us drop literature or do, you know, whatever it is. But it, it's varied over the years. But usually, there's a core, a core group with, of council members plus a lead, and then there's usually, you know, some citizens who are willing to step up and help too, with some of the burden. It's varied over the years, I guess is the long way of saying it.
Okay. Well, if there are no further questions or discussion, I think the project is to develop. I think Assistant City Manager Andrews walked us through what the timeline and the process would be. I would say, appreciate the, the notes of caution, Councilmember Ramirez. I think that I feel supportive of this because we are a very ambitious council with very ambitious residents, and we are looking at a very tight budget. So being able to meet all of those are things that we're going to need to get extremely creative on. Therefore, I feel like the cost of exploration is, is worth it, so that we can honestly meet the needs that our residents are asking for. So, all right. So why don't we do a, do we need to do a straw poll on it? We do, huh, because it got polled. Okay. Assistant City Clerk?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Showalter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Kame?
Yes. All right, back to you, Councilmember Ramirez. Project number 13, pavement condition index PCI increased to 71.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to work in collaboration with the council member who suggested this item. So I would welcome your participation and input. I, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. I want to try and find a way to, to make it work, recognizing that there are trade-offs, as the staff has shared with us and has been identified by the, the community. And I, sometimes it's, it's dangerous to become too wedded to your own ideas, but one of the ways I think we can make this work is by modifying the, the intent just a little bit to focus on the arterials in particular, and maybe the collector streets. I appreciated staff, including the map and the responses to council questions. It's on the last page. But, you know, looking at this map, I've been trying to digest it over the course of the meeting, but I think the, the red streets, the arterials, and many of the collector streets are really what most members of the community actually care about. And so I, I think, I couldn't support dramatically increasing the ongoing, you know, city contribution or expenditure on maintaining the average PCI for the entire network. We, we don't have the, the resources to, to make that work, and I would be uncomfortable with some of the trade-offs that have been contemplated. But I would be interested in analysis on what, what it would take to keep the arterials at an average PCI of, of 70. So, so that way, at the very least, we know we're addressing by far, I think, the vast majority of the concerns we've heard from the communities over the years. So it would be a dedicated or more concerted effort to, you know, maintain those streets, recognizing that, you know, maintenance early on is cheaper over time than, you know, wholesale reconstruction once a street has deteriorated, you know, beyond a certain point. I would welcome Public Works input on, on what that point is. But, you know, I, I didn't realize this, but I guess 70 has been our, our goal. And we, we haven't quite hit that goal for arterials. So I think investing, focusing on arterials seems to be a reasonable compromise where we can achieve the spirit of the, of the goal, address the, the quality of life concerns from, from our community, and also not break the bank. So that, that was the idea I wanted to elevate. Thank you.
Great. So can you, Councilmember Ramirez, just clarify the language for the, with the project name, or would it be, the name would be different, or kind of the scope would be different?
Um, I-
Because right now, it's listed as pavement condition index PCI increased to 71. So for your edits, is that?
Um, so-
I think the clarity would be helpful for that.
Yeah. I'll, I'll do my best, but I, I think I would, I would welcome city staff's input on this. So it, the intent would be, that, that would be not merely the goal, but, you know, that's, that's what the investment strategy would be, to achieve an average PCI of, I would say 70, because there's, there's apparently no significant, you know, discernible difference between 70 and 71 for the arterials. And at least having staff do that analysis, come back with, how much would that cost increase be? And then we can discern what the trade-offs may be, if, if that's the goal that the council wants to achieve.
Okay. I will turn to the project maker, Councilmember McAllister.
Well, Councilmember Ramirez, I appreciate your openness to, to work with me on this one. And I appreciate the willingness to pass this through, because it is important. And obtaining an average of 70 is enough to get us, our funds back, re, to reinvest in the city. So that's, that sounds like a fair deal. There is a cost, no matter, it's an infrastructure project that we need to get done. And as you mentioned, if we defer it, it's going to get more expensive over time. A lot of people were talking about the Action, AT, Action Transportation Plan. Well, what are they going to ride on? They're going to be riding on these roads, you know, are we going to turn them in the dirt? So we're, we're accomplishing the goal of the, you know, Active Transportation Plan by making sure that the roads are safe, that people will ride on them, there's not gravel. And if you notice that you just, we recently passed SB 1, taking that money. There's money to allow us to take, repair the road and to put in the Active Transportation Plan. So I see it as a win-win. And for us to do that, you, I think you need to do the foundation of the road, pave it, and then we can always add that on. So I, when you said come back, there is going to be a cost, but it's going to be a cost that either we pay it now or pay me more later. And to, your point is that if we keep it specific to certain ones, and to keep it down at 70, I think our money will go further and make sure people are happier and safer while they ride their bikes. And now the kids on these, or people on these electric bikes are scooting along pretty quick. You need to look at how safe that is. So I appreciate the openness to it, and I, I can, I can go with it.
Great. So it's moving it to 70, as well as the arterials. You're okay with that? Okay. Councilmember Hicks?
So I have to say, I had a lot of trepidation about this project, sorry, John. But I, I voted for it in our, during our last meeting, because I wanted to see how it would kind of fit in with, you know, each of these projects has a cer, needs a certain amount of funding, and I wanted to see how it would fit in with that. And getting answers back, like, if it's council strategy, this is from the staff report, "to increase the city's overall PCI to 71, more funds would be spent on pavement-focused projects, which may result in less funding for other types of projects relying on the same funding sources." That kind of, that's the kind of analysis that would make me not, not want to, not want to put this as a council priority project, but instead address it the same way we've always addressed paving. And I do have, I have some worries. I want to make active transportation a priority, but I also don't want active transportation to be, I don't know if this is an English word, "equivalenced," with paving. Because to me, it's about a lot more than paving. In fact, when places are just a mass of paving, people don't tend to want to walk on them much. It has to be much more, it, to me, it makes, we're making everything into concrete and not talking about shade, not talking about, I mean, we've talked about it tonight, but we may end up without the money to actually do it. So that's my, and you're the one who wanted wide sidewalks with trees only moments ago. So-
It still can be accomplished.
So I just want to make active, I want, I would like council to, I'm feeling that this project has made paving much more a part of the language we've been using since it was, since we voted on it. And I want to prioritize active transportation and green complete streets, and enhancing the public realm. Now, maybe I'll end up feeling that the 70, PCI 70, and the, and the arterials, that that will, that will do it. Or maybe we should just take it off and make it, and- we should just take it off and make it, and address paving the way we, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna still pave our streets, no matter how we do this. So that's my take on this at this point.
Councilmember Shaw Walter?
I kind of feel like we have a very professional evaluation system for figuring out what streets need to be paved. And things have gotten a little behind in the last few years because of the pandemic and many things that got behind in the pandemic because there were so many things we absolutely had to do. But all of our streets are our responsibility, not just the, I mean, except that the city's streets are our responsibility, whether they're an arterial or just a, you know, a feeder street. The feeder streets don't wear out as fast because they don't get as much traffic, because there isn't as much weight on them. So they don't need to be repaved as often. So I just sort of feel like the system that we have now is actually a good one. And I'm not sure whether having this elevated to a council work plan item or not makes a big difference. So I would really like to have staff weigh in on, how much difference does it really make if it's a work plan project or not?
So I will attempt to answer that, and then I'll invite our Public Works Director up if she has any other comments. But the capital improvement program has contemplated pavement, pavement management. We are already going to be working on a pavement management program in 2026 and every two years. So really, it's up to council to determine if you want to elevate this. You have other existing projects you're elevating, but the work is underway.
Will be ongoing either way.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I would add is that if this is voted for tonight, it's really, in my mind, an acceleration of, of what we're doing.
Thank you.
Acceleration.
Acceleration. Not a celebration, like a celebration. Okay. So, all right. I'm not seeing anyone else in the queue. And so just want to, oh, you have, you just added yourself. All right. Just trying to move it along. Councilmember Hicks?
So with that comment, I'm, I'm not going to vote to accelerate this over other projects. I think I'm, I'm happy with the way, I'm happy with our pavement management program, but I want to accelerate active transportation, and this is not what I want to accelerate because I think it would mean putting paving as a priority over other things.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember McAllister?
First of all, we've delayed paving. Now, it's not a bad word to pave our streets to make them safe for people to ride on them. And as we say, it's going to cost us more down the road. And saying pavement is not, includes what you want as active transportation because you still need to have a road. And everything that's going to be done needs to prep for the foundation. So we're not going to focus all on one thing, but we still need to take everything and bring it up. And you're deferring, again, things that people actually use, live on. They need to see that the city is doing something, that we're reinvesting in the city. And your active transportation plans, yeah, they're great, but again, they need the base of the roads. But when I was out campaigning, people said, what are we doing in the roads? Excluding El Camino. They want to see us reinvesting back in the city. And as you hear me often say, if we keep deferring, it's going to cost more and more. So we're going to lose money over time. And we're not, either way, it's going to be a lose-lose as we do it. But if we do it at a regular pace that we bring us up to the 70, we will have more funds to do the active transportation plan in the long run. Because one, we're going to get money back from the state, I mean, the county. We're going to have vehicle registration fees that are coming in. We just saw the SB 1 bringing in money that's going to help us take care of these issues. So the more we delay, the more it's going to cost.
Okay. I'm going to go to Councilmember Clark, and then I'm going to call the question.
I was just going to make a suggestion as to, because I still don't know what we're voting on, but-
I think that, so I was going to, yeah, clarify. So I think that what has been proposed was by Councilmember Ramirez that we move, we make project 13, say pavement condition index PCI increased to 70 with a focus on arterial streets only. And the project maker, Councilmember McAllister, was amenable to that. So that was what I was going to propose that we take a vote on.
Did I misunderstand? 70 is generally our goal now. We've just kind of lagged a little bit for pandemic reasons and all sorts of things.
Correct. Yes. Just, so what happened during the pandemic, really the big blow to this program was the fact that we had around 40% of our public work staff vacancy rate retire during the pandemic, along with just the other workload implication. So we just weren't able to do some of the work that was planned, but we're catching up now. But during that time period, we got below the PCI. So yes, the current goal is 70.
Okay. So if, if the question is, you know, do we want to reemphasize our, our goal of 70, sort of change the methodology that we've, we've used in the past where we're really focused on that average number and instead kind of looking in the future at arterials, a number of which will have active, active transportation projects on them if they don't already, like I know we're doing Middlefield soon, and some, and in Miramonte and some others. And then, and then also just, not just arterials, but there, there are a handful of streets with active transportation projects, like safe routes to schools, like Hans, which isn't an arterial. I think if, if, if the, the goal of this project is really just to reemphasize the, the goal of 70 with a specific focus longer term on arterials and active transportation projects and safe routes to schools, then that, that's something that I can support.
That's, that's what I heard. Do you mind just saying it into the mic? Because we have to say things into the mic now, not just shake your head.
Thank you.
Okay. That sounds a yes. That sounds like a yes. So if it's all right, I'll call a question. All right.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
No.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Kame?
Yes. All right. So then we'll move on to Councilmember Hicks. She had two items of interest. First was the pedestrian mall vacant storefront activation program.
So I just wanted to ask staff about this one, whether there was, whether there was any, what the, how you expected to get into the buildings. There has been talk in the past about, there's been talk in the past about doing a vacancy tax if you didn't engage with this program. Is that still on the table? Or how are you thinking about that?
Good evening, Council. Christian Murdock, Community Development Director. As you noted, Councilmember Hicks, one of the challenges with our ongoing efforts in this regard has been finding willing property owners. And that's one of the main delays with launching some of our more focused efforts related to this program. Thinking about a broader effort as part of, part of the council's priority work plan, we are thinking of other incentives, not a vacancy tax in light of the prior council decision not to direct staff to pursue it and due to the time and cost of putting that to the voters that will be associated with a vacancy tax that would affect our timeline for implementation. We are thinking of other options. I don't want to preview them too much, but other incentives, potentially punitive incentives that might enable us to cajole property owners to coordinate with this process in a way that they may not have otherwise wanted to do before.
Okay. So you'll be telling, you have ideas and you'll tell us more about them later.
That's right. I mean, it's not to build suspense. I'm not marketing. It's really, I don't want to get ahead of the city attorney's office and others related to these approaches. But we are thinking of other avenues besides vacancy taxes.
And can you imagine this interfacing at all with the other project we have on here, which is the volunteer project? So that, or not, that, for example, nonprofits like Community School of Music and Art, or I don't know if this would be volunteer, could, could do outreach for their own programs in Windows? Are you thinking of those kind of, I don't know if it's volunteer partnerships as well?
Can I take that? So it would not be the same as the volunteer framework. So the volunteer framework as proposed and scoped by staff is really about the volunteer organizations that primarily work with the community services department. Sometimes we'll come through the city manager's office on various projects and activities that we have to assess risk, legal risk, and also workers' compensation and things like that. So there would not be a nexus in that sense of volunteers working through this. But we do have avenues for staff to work with groups like the Community School of Music and Arts. So I think there could be certainly ways for them to engage, but it wouldn't necessarily be in this volunteer framework program.
Okay. Any other comments you have on that? Otherwise, that's all my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions on this item? All right. If not, maybe we vote?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllister?
Are we voting on the whole package or this one in particular?
Just this one. We're still on the polled stuff.
Thank you. Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Kame?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And then back to Councilmember Hicks, autonomous vehicle shuttle pilot program.
So I'm not going to propose that this get put back on our menu of options. But I just wanted to say that the staff comments, I thought, for why we shouldn't do it, were a little stronger, a little more, made it seem a little more daunting than I actually think it is. Because when I Googled this subject, there are actually a number of pilot programs all over Contra Costa County. I do not know why Contra Costa County in particular. And they have vehicles selected, like mini buses. And some of these pilot programs are up and running, including one at my mom's retirement village, which I see with people on it all the time. Every time I go there, it's driving around all the time with seniors on it, a bunch of seniors on it. So I, I just want to, it's not like this big impossible thing like it was portrayed in the staff report. And I just want everybody to have it. I'm glad I proposed it. I, I had thought of it, working along with our community shuttles. So, you know, maybe every other car, one of our community shuttles, then an autonomous one, making them more frequent. I don't think that context would work. But I know that, you know, funding our community shuttle is difficult. And maybe I'm exaggerating when I see many, but there's like two or three of them operating now in Contra Costa. So I would like us to keep our eye on this. And maybe in the future, this is what we want to do to make sure that our shuttles are, are still going. But I will withdraw it.
Thank you. I can't, I can't wait. I know that there's other states that have autonomous shuttles, so can't, can't wait to learn more and watch.
Our state has it.
Yes, yes, but I mean-
In Contra Costa County.
Really, really large, yeah.
Oh, large, robust.
I know, like University of Michigan, I heard, has a really big autonomous one, shuttle bus. All right. Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Okay. So then I'll move on to Councilmember, we don't need to take a vote on it. Right. Okay. So I'll move on to Councilmember Shaw Walter, who brought up project two, low and middle income housing.
Yeah. I, I just wanted to kind of stress that I'm really interested in identifying local barriers to condominium development. It seems like the other things that are listed here, I also think are wonderful things. But they're things we've been working on for quite a while. And it seems like this condominium thing is, is something that we've known has been a problem, but we haven't really done much about for a long time. So, so I just wanted to make that comment that for me, that's, although I, I do appreciate all of these other aspects, and I know that in order to make our housing work, it's like, you know, a big basket of tools. We have to use all the tools at our disposal. I just think that this is a tool we really should need to sharpen. And I don't think we've done that yet. So I just wanted to say that. And I don't know whether we need to vote on it or not. I mean, we want to keep it in there. I want to keep it in there.
Councilmember Hicks?
So does that include, are you, are you hoping to include in this, correct me if I've got this wrong, because it's Councilmember Ramirez. I've heard talking about it the most. But condo mapping of duplexes, does it include that in your mind?
Yeah. It could, it could include condo mapping of duplexes or ADUs. I mean, it's, you know, I, I think we should, we should look at it in an expansive way.
Okay. How about before we get to other colleagues' comments, I'm going to ask our housing director, Wayne Chen, to come down and perhaps talk about the things that are envisioned and being studied or perhaps identified. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wayne Chen, your housing director. Yes. So as part of the council response, staff has done some preliminary work in terms of what a scope of work might be for this project. We are seeking for this to be broad-ranging, but also innovative, to do an assessment of best practices, what exists out there. But trying to see if there are innovative ways, funding and partnerships for us to be able to really expand this area. It's been on the work plan for a while, and we think we now have the bandwidth and maybe some resources to support it. In addition to what was in the council response, and further looking at the housing element, we did identify program 1.7 related to ADUs and SB 9. And there looks to be some emerging work around that, which could qualify this as part of a middle income housing strategy. So part of the scope of work and the funding that would go to support it would be to take a look at program 1.7, ADUs and SB 9, and whether it fits into a strategy here. And then we would also build on things like the ELI Technical Assistance Panel for the middle income housing work and possibly an affordable condo project on a city-owned site. So, you know, I think those are the main scope of work. And perhaps CDD Director Christian Murdock has anything else to discuss regarding removing barriers to condos. What we have talked about is that it might be done primarily in-house, but it could be supplemented by consultant support.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Chen. Good evening again, Council. In addition, one of the other approaches that we're thinking about taking is some really focused discussions with local developers of condominium projects, to really get their firsthand experience about what works well and what doesn't in terms of regulatory approaches. And for those that are familiar with Mountain View, really hearing firsthand what has been an obstacle to them wanting to undertake these kinds of projects. As we have seen, not very many of these have been proposed in recent years. And so we want to figure out why and figure out what we can do about those things within the city's control.
That sounds great. Thank you. Great. Thank you. Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, Community Development Director Murdock. I had a quick question for you. So I really appreciate the remarks from both of our directors and also agree with you, Councilmember Shaw Walter. I did want to clarify, I was very surprised in the response to the question about Housing Element Program 1.6, the duo subdivisions. It looks like the first time the council will weigh in on a scope is in quarter two 2026, with the deadline in December, being December 31st, 2026, which struck me as very, a very quick turnaround time. So I wanted to understand, is, it's, it's almost, it's too good to be true, right? Ordinarily, you know, given the workload and the number of projects that, that you're managing, that I would imagine a longer, you know, timeframe would, would be necessary. But can you help me understand at least why you're anticipating a relatively quick turnaround for that project?
So I think part of this might be informed by my colleague, Director Ng from Public Works Department. This is a joint effort between community development and Public Works, primarily because of the subdivision focus of these regulations, which historically is led by the Public Works Department. And so it may be a reflection of their workload in part for why the timing of coming to council is, as it's indicated in the council response. But in preparing the response for the council question earlier today, I did understand Q2 2026 as being a conservative estimate, not to overpromise in terms of the timeline. And so there's the potential to come earlier unless Director Ng has anything to the contrary to provide.
She's shaking her head, no. So I guess, so I- She's shaking her head no. So I guess, so I appreciate that. I was just struck by, it felt like, you know, quarter two to quarter four is not a lot of time for, I don't have a good sense of the scope of work and how much time it would take for staff. But I was just curious to understand, that makes it sound like it's not a heavy lift. So I want to make sure I'm understanding, if I'm interpreting that correctly, or if there's something I'm not quite grasping from that response.
Sure. I mean, we haven't gotten into the work yet. My assessment is it's probably a medium lift. There are some unique aspects of subdivisions on such a small scale. There are unique questions about how HOAs would work in terms of such a small group of potential owners. And so we do have some work to do. Is it a heavy lift? I'm not sure. Is it easy? I don't think so. I think it's somewhere in between. But we do need to recognize it's in part a technical process as well, in terms of the subdivision regulations. And so that may enable us to turn it around a little more quickly than may be expected.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. I just wanted, if we're on track to meet the Housing Element deadline, I'm good. And I know without too much scoping it, they're hard questions to answer. So I appreciate your response.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember McAllister?
I'm going to be persistent and consistent that we can buy units and we can turn them over. And although I was just talking with Paula Perez of the Community Land Trust, they're working on that. I told her there was a property in Mountview that was 12 units, and it was $400,000 a unit. And I told her to go take a look at that. So there is a solution if people are willing to put out pilot programs to take a look at something, to say that we can get a condo under $700,000. Or every time we ask somebody about a condo, it's a million five. So there is options and solutions. We just have to have an open mind. And I'm going to be pragmatic about it and just keep pounding away, I mean, encouraging you to go that route.
Great, thank you. Any other comments on this item? All right. Well, I appreciate that staff is, from various departments, are working on this item. It's something that I elevated, it's something that I brought forward when I was first elected onto council. It's something, a process that I've gone through myself, having gone through being here a condo and now homeownership. And I think part of it is, I'd also invite colleagues to stretch in terms of what maybe the market may allow for low and middle income might be a different density than your preference, but that's what the market allows. And we are going to need to stretch in terms of providing those opportunities for low and middle-income homeownership. So we just ask for that support as it goes forward. So we'll do a voice vote.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Yes.
Mayor Kameh?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we're just going to need to have a motion to continue the meeting past 10:00 PM, please.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sorry. Oh, sorry. Does staff need anything else for this item?
Yes, could there be a motion on the projects?
Apologies, I'm sorry. I did all my motions and was prompted to continue the meeting, so was thinking about that. Councilmember Shaw Walter, Councilmember Hicks, are you comfortable with continuing the meeting? Well, no, no, no. We have to do a, we have to do action on the fight. What is the language here? The two recommendations from the staff report, review the staff analysis, council advisory, and then two, we provided the, yeah. Okay. We'll vote on that, and then we'll vote to continue the meeting. Apologies. Great, and that passes unanimously. Thank you to staff. All right, so to continue our items, we're going to need a motion and a second. So we have that. We'll vote on continuing our meeting. All right, that passes with the two nays, who I knew were coming. All right, so we'll move on to item eight, which is council staff and committee reports. Councilmember Shaw Walter?
Okay, well, I want to report on three things that I went to and also make a motion. So on April 9th, I attended the SANA SVECE meeting, and we have energy toolkits available that are at all the libraries. And I'll be circulating a little bit of information about them. Then on the 15th, we had the Council Reportments Review Committee, and we interviewed lots of good candidates. And earlier today, we appointed them. Then April 17th, we had our annual Neighbor Association Grant Meeting and Dinner. And I'd like to thank staff for doing a good job. It was a little different than previous years, but I thought it went well. And then addition to that, I would, I've been troubled by my, I would like to make a motion to reconsider. I've been troubled by my vote on R3. On March 25th, 2025, we held a study session on updates to the R3 zoning districts. During the study session, city council selected density options for several R3 change areas by straw poll vote. For several of the R3 change areas, I voted in favor of studying density option 2A, which was the four-story R3 D1 option. I would like to change my vote to support studying density option 1 for these change areas, which was the six-story R3 D2 option. Therefore, I move that this matter return to council on a future date to allow for reconsideration of the vote of all R3 change areas for which option 2A was selected. So I'm going to make a motion, and I hope someone will second it. Okay? And this is allowed by our council policy.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaw Walter. Councilmember Clark?
I just have a question. So when we went through that, we kind of went through a votarama, musical chairs situation, because there are a whole bunch of recusals. And so I'm just trying to figure out if there's, it sounds like the request is to vote on all of the change areas where there was a certain, vote a certain way. I don't know how many of those there are, or how that will play out, and if there's some way to narrow it. Anyway.
I see City Attorney Logan in the queue.
I think I can help clarify what would come back. So I did have an opportunity to look at, watch the video of the vote related to the R3 change areas. And what would be coming back is only those areas that defaulted to the option 2A. So option 2A was the default recommendation, and you did go through various votes for certain properties that got selected for option 1. And so what would be coming back, and I think, is it about 15? Did we, yeah, I'm seeing our Community Development Director shaking and said, yes, I think there's about 15 properties that would come back that fell into the option 2A category. And I don't believe there's any recusals for those. I don't believe any of those had recusals. So the ones that actually fell into the 2A category, the ones that would come back, and there would be no recusals for those. So it is a fairly narrow group that would be coming back to council for reconsideration.
And then is the idea that they would be considered unbunk? Or like all together? Or are we going through each of those 15 individually? I guess it's up to the council, but I answered my own question, sorry.
Yeah, I think it would be, yeah, it would be up to council to decide whether or not you wanted to vote wholesale, or if you wanted to take them one at a time, and decide whether some of those, you know, went up to option 1, or, and some of them stayed at option 2A, or, so we might have to take them one at a time. It would kind of depend.
I can come back to you. There's another colleague in the queue, Councilmember McAllister.
Procedure question. So if Councilmember Shaw Walter wants to change her vote, could that not be, why do we have to go through the whole process that everybody votes, that she could just change it? I remember changing my vote on a particular item years ago after the event, and we didn't have to go through the process, they just changed the vote. Now, it did matter on the final conclusion, but if she changes her vote, why can't that just be retro?
Yes, I heard about your change of vote many years ago.
Holy-
I was not here. When I got here, I was reviewing your council policy, and you have an adopted council policy that talks about the opportunity to reconsider an item when action has been taken by city council. Since that time, we've gone through amendments to council policy A13 to make it clear that on study session items, where there is even a straw poll vote on items, that your motion for reconsideration process that was in council policy A13 applies. And so now we follow the policy that was adopted for, and processed for seeking reconsideration. And Councilmember Shaw Walter worked with me and Kimbra, and we helped her navigate this process in order to make this motion. On the, yeah.
So I was just telling the city attorney that there were split votes on some of the change areas, so her wanting to change her vote would change the structure of the vote count. Which means others might want to change their votes as well.
Councilmember Clark, I see you back in the queue.
So, you know, the policy in place is the policy in place. So I'm thinking about this more from a precedent procedural perspective. So I know we don't do Roberts rules anymore, but typically, I assume there isn't a big difference between, usually a motion to reconsider occurs at the next regular meeting, but maybe our policy says something different. And so does the policy trump the, whatever rules we go by in that case, or?
So we, so when we updated our policy, we follow some Roberts rules and some Rosenberg's rules. So it's not that we did away with Roberts rules, but there was an incorporation in some aspects of Rosenberg's rules. And so I can't remember where the motion for reconsideration process fell, but I think that your policy, it does have that, where it says that you're supposed to make a motion for reconsideration at the meeting or at the very next meeting. And it does say that any motion after that is untimely, but the council policy that was adopted, and I think the one that was already in place when I was here, allows for an untimely motion when supported and brought by two council members.
I see.
So it was your own policy that, and I don't know if that, I think that is a divergence from both Roberts rules and Rosenberg's rules.
Definitely.
But it was already in your own policy. And I don't think that was anything that changed.
And then, so two more things. The first is, I believe that was a study session. So while we provided direction, we didn't take formal motions, does that play into this? Or are we treating the policy to apply the same to a study session as it would to a regular item?
So that was the amendment. That was one of the amendments to the policy that applied the motion for reconsideration process to study sessions specifically. So one of the problems we ran into in the past was that it did not apply. It only applied to final action. And so we found ourselves in somewhat of a conundrum, because we didn't have any direction on what to do when it is a study session. And so it went to Council Policies and Procedures Committee, I think, for discussion. And therefore, the policy was amended to ensure that the motion for reconsideration process applies to both final action and to study sessions.
And those amendments were made, do you recall, roughly a year? I mean, is it like 10 years ago?
A year.
Or was-
No, 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 no.
Oh, so when I wasn't here. Okay, that makes sense, when I wasn't here. So I would, I might make a separate motion unless it's incorporated into this, but I think maybe CPDC wants to take one more look at that, just in terms of what's timely and the threshold for two. Because it's one thing, you know, if it's within a meeting or two, I'm thinking precedent-wise, like what happens if six or nine months, and then you only need two people to bring something back when staff is like really far down the road? But that's a separate thing. But I do think that might, that, it's not a loophole. That clarification might be helpful, but maybe that can be part of this motion or a separate motion that I make as an item eight. But, okay, thank you for the history lesson. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Shaw Walter, then Councilmember Hicks.
Yes, I was going to say that your memories about what happens and what's in the policy are pretty much all correct. There's two ways that you can do the council to reconsider. One is C, a motion to reconsider is in the next meeting. Or D, after the deadline for seeking reconsideration has passed, a matter that was acted on by the body shall not be placed on the agenda again for consideration within one year after it was acted upon, except for the request of one or more council members, at least one of whom voted on the prevailing side. So that's the, that's the part of it that we're going now, using now, if we go forward with this. And I, you know, I was just troubled by the idea that we were really figuring out what should be considered under SEQA. And I think that it's a better policy to make a broader envelope for consideration of SEQA. That doesn't mean that that's what you actually do, you know, you decide on, but you just, you analyze it. So that's what has troubled me.
Councilmember Hicks?
So it seems like one of the issues that we were considering, when we were considering this, was the, how density bonuses interplay with the properties. And we've also asked for an off-agenda memo on that subject. And so I'm wondering the timing of those two things, because if we're going to reconsider it, it would be better to have that information. But I don't know if the timing will work.
Is it okay if I speak? Thank you. We will not be able to get the state density bonus memo done prior to this coming back. I think that there are serious constraints for starting the SEQA analysis, if I'm correct. And so this would come back, I think, rather, as quickly as we possibly can get it on a council agenda. And between now and the end of the fiscal year, the city attorney's office is going to be slammed with contracts and budget and all of that. So I don't think that state density bonus memo can be done before this comes back.
Okay. I was guessing you'd say that, but you bet.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. But just as a brief response, I think what Councilmember Shaw Walter was saying is important, too, that the SEQA envelope is a starting point, but that doesn't mean that we, that the council has to approve that intensity with the final adoption of development standards. So if, I'm confident we'll get the state density bonus law analysis before R3 comes back, you know, with development standards and that kind of thing. And that analysis may inform your vote at that time about, you know, well, you know, it turns out that the state density bonus law is, you know, much more impactful than we were anticipating. So that will affect how you would vote on the final height and density limits, right? So in other words, we've got multiple bites at the apple. And the SEQA is the absolute maximum we could possibly contemplate, but there will be impacts and mitigations. And then there's still a political decision at the end about whether, you know, even if we can mitigate those impacts, those are the densities and heights that we actually want.
Councilmember McAllister?
Okay, what the heck. Yeah, I feel uncomfortable on voting on this, but if it's a procedure, I'll, it's in the rules, so she's, you know, technically legally can do it. But the wait this time is, it just, it just doesn't seem right. But that's- But if that's the procedures, then we go with what we've voted on.
We can go to Councilmember Clark and then I'll, I'll weigh in.
I was just going to wrap up and say, I, I agree with Councilmember McAllister, like the policy is the policy. You know, but the policy is to, you know, it takes, the rules are to bring it back and then the council can decide, you know, we're not bound to proceed. But, I mean, in this case, I understand the, understand the concern, I'll support this and then I'll, I'll make a subsequent motion just to have CPSC take a look at A13 and maybe some timelines in the, in the future, not necessarily next week, but it would be a good refresher for me. As long as, I think maybe CPC can investigate that on their own, but it would be good to have the council's blessing to do that if, for nothing, for no other reason than for me to refresh sort of what's, what's going on. Not that it was bad, it's just, it would just be good to know, so.
Great, thank you. I'll, I'll start with sharing that I support this item coming back to the CPSC. I think it deserves further discussion and, and further clarity, I think, in terms, especially in terms of, as Councilmember Clark mentioned, threshold. I also feel very uncomfortable. I, I think I'm uncomfortable for multiple reasons. And I will share, I'm most uncomfortable because this is not the first time that Councilmember Showalter is asking for reconsideration of an item that has come before us. This happened with Gatekeeper and it's happening with R3. And we, all seven of us are elected to review public policy as it comes for us. We get the tentative agenda list with foreshadowing of the next three months, so the next quarter of what comes before us. And to relitigate an item, again, I feel like sets a bad precedent for public policy. And you've shared often how you're an engineer. I went to public policy school and it is my training that shares with us that you take a vote. And sometimes they're difficult, oftentimes they're difficult. And we make decisions and we need to be able to, to move forward from those. And sometimes we're able to do that as final action, looking for other solutions, but to bring an item back for reconsideration just does not make me feel comfortable. And I would share that with all colleagues. I think once is, is, once, multiple times, I feel that it also opens the door for the public to feel that once council makes a decision, it's not the final decision and that council members can be lobbied to change their minds after a vote has been taken. And sometimes, especially when it's a tough vote, sets a bad precedent that I just, I can't support. I see no others in the queue, so we can take the vote. And that goes forward, I think, 5:2. So we'll move on to item nine, which is adjournment. Tonight, oh, sorry, Councilmember Clark, did you have a report?
I just wanted to move with, with the council, if the council would just consent to having CPSC whenever it makes sense, you know, in the, in the near term to take a look at A13. And then also, I was going to ask if, if it's okay with the council if CPSC would also look at, I believe it's A2, it's just the, the travel policy and the amounts that I, I think they were reduced during the pandemic. And I don't know if they should or shouldn't be increased, but I think it would make sense for us just to take another look at it on, on a, whatever timeline makes the most sense. Yeah, same motion to, for the CPSC to be allowed to take a look at those two things.
So I think you need to make the motion. And, okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Councilwoman Ramirez to review those two items back to CPSC. Okay. So any other things for item eight? All right. So then we'll move to item nine, which is adjournment. Tonight, we're adjourning in the, the meeting in honor of our former mayor, Matt Allen, who provided special service to our city organization and community. Our thoughts are with his family during this difficult time and we are grateful for his service. The Mountain View Voice did a nice article about him, if you'd like to know more about former Mayor Matt Allen. The next city council meeting will be held on May 13th, 2025. This meeting is adjourned at 10:40. Yeah, 10:40, thank you.